I'd like to start the meeting, please. Call this meeting to order. Would Eagle Scout candidate Jacob Parker, please come up and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Okay. Announcements. The town offices and transfer station will be closed on Wednesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. The following dates are for regular town council meetings. Thursday, November 19th, at 7:00 PM here in this room. Thursday, December 3rd, 7:00 PM, again here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And Thursday, December 17th, 7:00 PM, in this Matthew Thornton Room. Eileen?
I don't know if this is appropriate for announcements or manager's report, so I'll just pick the announcements. I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that Rick Seymour's last day, our Public Works Director, is tomorrow. He's worked here for seven years, and he's been a very good Public Works Director. He's going to be really hard to replace, and he is looking forward to retirement, and he is, you know, he and his wife will be traveling to Maine and to Florida, and we'll very sincerely miss him, so I just want to...
Do we visit him in Florida?
We, he said, "We can think about him in Florida."
If you can find him.
He won't give us the address.
Exactly. So, tax bills have been mailed this week, and they will be due on December 3rd. The skateboard park on O'Gara Drive will be closing for the season on Friday, which is November 13th, so that we can perform some maintenance on the park and get the facility ready for the winter. And that's about it. Thank you.
Excellent. Yes, Finley?
Probably not appropriate, but I was just, I was curious, how did the skateboard park go this year? Did things work reasonably well?
There was some vandalism.
We had one incident, but beside that, it, it worked out. They self-policed themselves and did a great job.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions, Eileen? Okay. Kinder Morgan, just a couple of things. One, I just want to let everyone know that I went to the Temple meeting on Monday, November 2nd, related to their discussion of the compressor station. They had four people from the state there, three from DES, one from SEC, which is the Site Evaluation Commission. And it was basically, the purpose was to express or to explain the process by which the state is going to be evaluating the application for the compressor station. What was interesting is, it started out with a very short presentation by a citizen group that was excellent, about research having been done at a plant in Meninsky, New York. And they specifically brought out air quality issues, and really had a lot of data, and they used that kind of data to present to DES in terms of what they were hoping to get in the criteria. The pre-application has not been received. Once it is received, the Kinder Morgan submits it to DES, they'll immediately open up a docket, and there'll be a 30-day comment period. After that time, they will start reviewing the application in light of the federal and state guidelines that they have for environmental. And they did separate the presentation into air quality versus water. Intermittent, they do have, they have to come up with a determination about whether they will get a permit or not within 365 days. And during that time, there'll probably be intermittent times when the commission and/or DES will ask for the questions of KM, who will have to, you know, respond to that. So they'll be back and forth over that period of time. And they're saying they think it will probably take a year to review it. They'll take that much time. Sure.
I haven't had a chance to tell any of you this, because I contacted Joanna, because the question was asked of me, of Nancy, and by Nancy and Tom, because the representative from DES didn't seem to know the answer to whether DES, whether FERC law superseded the, you know, the local state DES requirements, and whether or not they even had to go through that process, or the Site Evaluation Committee process. So I asked her, and she said, "It's very complicated." Apparently, the, the person from DES didn't know the answer to that. And so, what she said was that if we push to have that written into the order by FERC, then it will be included, it may be included, but you have to actually take some action to ask them to, you don't have to, but I wouldn't, she said, "I wouldn't leave it to chance that they're going to not require it." So, so if they don't, if it's not required, they don't have to follow it. If it's not in the order, the, the final application to FERC, not application, but the final certificate that's issued, then they do not have to. They can, but they don't have to.
By FERC?
Right. Exactly. So what she, what she was saying is that we should probably get in there and write a letter to FERC, saying to them, "We want to make sure that you include in your approval that they must go through the state processes, including the DES, including the, you know, DOT, and including the Site Evaluation Committee," which Kinder Morgan has said verbally that they would do.
Right. And that's what, basically, there were a lot of questions asked, that was one of them. And you're right, they wouldn't answer. Does the federal government, does FERC have precedence over any state criteria as such? Well, we work very cooperatively with them. Exactly. So, they couldn't, either they couldn't, or they just chose not to answer that question. There were also questions about the EPA, and the EPA is a lot of the criteria that they use. And again, the question was raised, "Does FERC have precedence over anything the EPA would say?" Well, they work very cooperatively with, so it wasn't answered succinctly.
The answer's yes. FERC does have control. I mean, if you listen to what Eileen and Joanna were saying, unless FERC says they have to do it, they don't have to do it. So they obviously have control over it.
Right. But in terms of the decisions that they make, my criteria, that, those are the kind of questions they were asking. Not whether they should or not, but what do you do with the information? If the state DES made a decision about no because of this, could FERC override that decision?
Yes.
The answer is yes, probably.
The answer is basically Kinder Morgan can, because once they have the certificate, and it doesn't say you have to match that, then they don't.
Right. Okay, so I just wanted to report on that. It had been brought up that maybe we should have that with the possibility of a meeting station here. And I just wanted to make it clear, one, it's, we've heard about it, but it's not been said yet. It's not been submitted yet, there was a meeting station. And that's why I wanted to go to Temple, to see what they're doing. And really, it was more informational giving, which I, I think, having them come here really wouldn't serve that much of a purpose. I just said what they said. So, my personal opinion, which we can discuss further, the closer we get, I just don't know how much value there would be in having a meeting, but that's just my opinion at the moment. Because they just explained the process. They didn't say much more beyond that. Tom, did you want to say something?
Well, I just want to caution everybody that, you know, having them go through the process isn't the same as accepting the outcome of the process.
Exactly.
Okay? So while they may be required to go through the state process, the FERC doesn't have to accept the outcome of the state process.
Which is what I meant to say, yeah.
Why wouldn't they, as far as, you know, past history, is there any anecdotal evidence? What did that, when you say that, what does it, what does it really mean? And they don't have to follow, do they normally follow their own rulebook?
Yes.
And what FERC asks of them only.
And this is pure speculation.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's anecdotal.
They, they may, you know, they may see it as an impingement upon their, upon their authority and their ability to operate the way that they feel that the law allows them to operate. Because when we had the initial briefing from Attorney Akapino in Milford, back in the summer, or before the summer, about the Site Evaluation Committee, he said, "Yeah, they can come in, they probably will, but FERC isn't bound by our, FERC isn't bound by our decisions."
Right.
So they can tell them to go through the process, but they don't have to accept the findings of the Site Evaluation Committee or a state agency.
But I guess that if it's included in the decision or the certificate, that they must be and must be bound by it, then...
So it's up to FERC to make that statement?
Yeah. And I'm, it sounds like they probably won't, but anyway.
Sure, Jerry.
Thank you for attending that meeting. I wondered if having a similar meeting here regarding the metering station was something that we should consider or not. I think possibly what some people might believe that meeting to be is, we're going to actually discuss specifics about the impacts of a metering station, and then possibly that would be premature to do at this point. So I get that. My question, and to speak to the, the process about, I mean, I think all along, we've said FERC can do whatever they want. But at the same time, we still need to participate in the process, and if we should be asking for something, we should be asking for something. When in the process would we make that request to FERC? Would it be after they file, after Kinder Morgan files the application, or before?
I could find out from Joanna, and I can get her working on that right now, if you give me that direction.
To be ready.
Because, yeah, because for instance...
I personally am in support of that, because I absolutely, in addition to the fact that I think we should ask them to follow local ordinances that we have pertaining to blasting and construction and a whole other thing, I think we should at the very least ask for it, so...
And that was part, that was also a question that was raised. What about the local? And the DES said, "That is one of the standards, that there's..." The Site Evaluation Commission, at least she said, "That's the state planning board." That's how they describe themselves. And a lot of their criteria and standards are based upon, have been revised recently because of federal standards, and therefore, they respond to that. So that there's a fair amount of consistency among the state and local criteria and standards. And therefore, when you come to adhering to local, you are in fact responding in most cases to also state. So yes, you would hope that they would respond to that, and that her belief was that they would respond to local criteria, because blasting came up in terms of the water.
And I mean, the Conservation Commission has addressed that very specifically in their written communication to FERC. So I, I personally don't think it would be, I would support asking for it, at least.
Yeah, I agree. The second thing I wanted to mention in this section is that the town council received a letter from ACOM. You all received it by email, I have had copies here if anybody wants to read it, but there are also copies on the table. And ACOM is the company that is hired by Kinder Morgan to evaluate environmental issues related to routes. Now, they asked us to respond to the route change in terms of its environmental impact, blah, blah. The only thing was, it was the wrong map. It was an old map. So we have already contacted them and said, "You change the map to make it an accurate map, and then we'll talk about responding." So I wanted to let the public know that. Again, everybody else, we already knew that. It was ridiculous.
Yeah, when you see the map, there's no Continental Boulevard on it. There's no Whittier Place.
There's a map from like 1970.
Okay? It has the original alignment of Natticook Road joining Route 101A.
There's no Continental Boulevard.
Yeah, yeah, who cares about, yeah, you know, what's the...
No industrial drive.
And, and the thing is too, besides that, it's a different route. It's the route that goes through Fidelity and goes through the mall and all that, you know?
So needless to say, we can't respond to something that's totally inaccurate. So we've let them know, and Kinder Morgan know, and you start to putting your act together, and we'll put our act together. Okay? Okay. Comments? And that's all I have to say about, that's all I have to say about that.
I just had, I just had a question, yeah, they were invited late to the party, apparently. The MBD, we talked, spoke at our last meeting about how they had received communication from Kinder Morgan. I'm assuming that no meeting date has been set, otherwise we would have heard about it?
I was told by Ron Minor that it was going to be a public meeting, and that it had not been set, and he promised me that he would call me when that was set.
Okay. Because I think that's really, really important to the town, so I just want to make sure that we keep letting people know that as soon as we know something, we'll be sure to share it. Thank you.
Anything else? Comments from the press and public? Any questions? Well, comments, actually.
Gina Rosati, 15 Dunbar, thank you for going. I know that's a really long, dark ride at night to go to Temple. So I just wanted to say thank you for going.
It wasn't too long, but it was certainly dark.
Really, really dark. What was the other thing I was going to say?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, because, yeah, because I went out to Mason for the, for the executive council meeting, and I mean, that would have been a long, dark ride, too. There's actually, next Thursday, there's a meeting in Ridge at Franklin Pierce, and they're going to have Curtis Cole from Kinder Morgan, Dave Solomon from the union leader, and another guy who hasn't annoyed me yet, so I don't remember his name. And they're going to be talking about, it's not just pipelines. So I can get that information to you. When I was at the rally out in Keene, they were passing those out. So I'll type that up. I can give it to you. I'll give you a copy of that.
Excellent.
And the other thing that I wanted to say was, the newest route, somebody told me, I guess originally Continental was supposed to go further in, where there's a swamp, but then they couldn't go there because there's peat bog there. So when they, and the DOT was the one that called, commented on that peat bog. So that might, whatever the EPA is, I don't know. I never, I've lived there for 20 years, I never knew that there was peat bog there. So they might want to look into that, because from what I understand, peat bogs and pipelines don't really go.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else. Okay. What I would like to do, without objection, is move two items to now, before recognitions and resignations. We have an Eagle Scout candidate who wants to be able to receive approval for a project that he's going to do, and we want to make sure he gets home in time to do his homework. We don't want to provide an excuse for, "I couldn't do it." And the other item, and we'll do that first, so that's under new business number two. I also like to move up new business number three, townwide reevaluation. And she has been here a while, and we, I would like to move that forward. So without objection, we'll do that. Okay, so Jacob, come on up. And this is Jacob Parker, Life Scout. Jacob Parker is proposing to build an archery range, cool, shooting platform in Wasserman Park for the benefit of the Parks and Recreation Department and Natticook Day Camp. So go right ahead, Jacob.
Thank you. So, like you said, I'm building a, a platform in Wasserman Park. I'm Jacob Parker from Troop 48, here in Merrimack. See if I can get this up here. Is this on?
Is it bright green?
Yeah. Hello, testing?
Is it working?
Okay. Let's see.
It was there, what happened? This closed.
So this is my plan. I'll just do a little player for it, for you. So it's a 24-foot by 12-foot deck, or 8-foot deck, sorry. And it's built on an incline, so there's a little bit of difference in the height, but the maximum height is about 13 feet from the ground. So that is basically kind of the overview around it.
You gave the viewing audience a vertigo with that, just to let you know.
Thank you.
That was good.
There's a lot of people running to the bathroom right now.
Or they're looking for the glasses.
Hold up, hold up.
Where's the wastebasket? Where's the wastebasket? We just need that.
I'll control them, continue.
Okay, so it's, it's, I don't, basically, you know, this is what it looks like. It's made out of pressure-treated wood, and has the foundation. I don't know what questions you have about it.
Well, you just go right ahead, and then we'll go down, but this question's taken in.
Okay, great.
Review the literature that you've already submitted to us.
Okay, cool. So, I guess I'll just go over basically as much as I can. The foundation is, the 4x4 posts will be 30 inches into the ground, on top of a cement block, which is on top of a foot of crushed stone. The rafters underneath, or the joists underneath the, the deck are spaced 12 inches on center. And then there's decking on top of that. As far as the roof goes, there are 16-inch-on-center rafters crossed by 2x4s that are 12 inches on center, which are then covered by a brand named Andura Roofing, which is an asphalt roofing. It's, has a 3:12 incline that is recommended for heavy snow areas, as well as the 12-inch-on-center 2x4s that go across. The maximum height from the deck from, from this point to here is about eight feet, and the back is about six feet. So, there's a bench in the back, as well as these PVC quivers for the arrows to hold. About four archers can shoot at once from it. And yeah, that's basically it.
Okay, now what, now how are you going to elicit money in order to fund this project?
Yeah, so I'll be holding a soup and salad fundraiser next Friday, the 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at... Sorry, what?
Friday, the 13th?
I know, I thought about that, but maybe people remembered better. I don't know. And it'll be at 110 Concord Street in Nashua. Just, you can come in, you can buy tickets online using Eventbrite, that I have a link that I'm going to post on Patch. And, or you can just come and buy your tickets at the door.
Excellent.
The project costs about $1,400.
Excellent. Tom?
Where on Wasserman Park will it be located?
So it's, it's at the current archery range, which is just by the road. It's near the exit, and it's just, there's bushes between the road, and then the, there's an open area.
Dan?
And just as, for all of you to know, that Jacob came before the Parks and Rec Committee a few weeks ago and gave a presentation. He didn't have all the regular, the rest of the architectural drawings that came in tonight's packet, but so that, he gave the whole presentation to the Park and Rec Board, which made the recommendation to bring it to us tonight. So it was very well thought out in where they were going to put it and all that, and the Park and Rec, obviously, as well as MacAsperis, very excited. Another, again, this troop and all the, I just don't know of another town that does voice-out projects that we have in our town. It's amazing. And this is just another, just a example of the effort that the troop does in town, so just to let everybody know that as well. Thank you, Jacob.
You're welcome.
Bellboy?
Yeah, thank you. Jacob, it looks like you're going to be building the platform into a slope. Am I, am I seeing that?
Correct.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So it's about, it has about a 15, 20-inch inclined drop from one side to the other side. But for the foundation, the foundation does follow that slope, if you can tell from there. It kind of moves down with it. So all the beams will be all 30 inches in the ground with the same base layer from where they are.
So at the, how, how much of a drop is there on the, when I'm looking at your, to the left side, how, how far of a drop-off is it as opposed to being where it's level with the ground on the other side?
So it's about 20 inches.
20 inches?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Jody?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. Congratulations on getting this far. That's a really big deal. And thank you for gifting the town with this project. I just wondered if you might state your fundraising information one more time, and slowly, so anybody who's watching this meeting and would be interested can make sure they know how to buy tickets and where to go on Friday. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So it'll be a soup and salad fundraiser next Friday, the 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And it'll be at 110 Concord Street in Nashua, just over the border, off of Daniel Webster Highway, sort of. And I will be posting a link to an Eventbrite ticket site that you can buy tickets to go there on Merrimack Patch, as soon as I get it approved, this project and the fundraiser approved by the Eagle Board for my project. And then you can either buy tickets online or at the door that night.
Excellent.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? First of all, I'm really impressed at your, I don't even know what, like, your presentation.
Thank you.
Which is probably second nature to you. I know the person that I am, it's like I'm blown away. I know it's really fundamental, but for me...
Yeah.
It's really, you did a really nice presentation.
Thank you.
Which is great. I know it's hard, and I second Dan's message, that we're forever being amazed at not only the amount of Scouts that come before us for the Eagle Scout projects, but the quality of the work, and how much we have benefited from the projects. Should we thank the whole troop, actually?
Thank you. We appreciate it.
So, could I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that the town council approve the proposed construction of an archery range shooting platform in Wasserman Park for the benefit of the Parks and Recreation Department and Natticook Day Camp, and that furthermore, that the town manager, if necessary, be authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to help Jacob with the project at Wasserman Park.
Motion made by Bellboy, second.
Yes, sir.
Fin, okay, I saw your finger first. Finley, you'll do the next one. Okay, any further discussion?
Not to, not to be redundant, but this was amazing, Jacob, really was. And I wish you a lot of success as you move forward with the project, and I look forward to having another Eagle Scout here in Merrimack. I was going to make the comment that the Merrimack Village Water District just got an award for having the cleanest tasting water in the United States. I would also argue that they're also contributing to the number of Eagle Scouts that are being produced in our community. So there's something in the water. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? None. Seven, zero, zero. Congratulations, Jacob.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
And I look forward to seeing, and it's, now you're projecting, what, November, right?
Yep.
You're going to be doing it this month?
Yep, November 22nd.
How long is it going?
21st is my bill day, sorry.
How long do you think it's going to take you?
It'll take probably a couple, some preparation time the week before to build, to dig the posts, but I hope to have it built in one day, so...
Oh, God bless you.
Thank you.
Not a he, it's a you.
You are, yeah, I was going to say you have a lot of help, I'm sure. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May the weather be with you. Now go home and do your homework.
Keep us out of trouble.
Okay, we're now going to do the, again, new business, 2016 Townwide Reevaluation, submitted by Avatar Associates President Lauren Martin. The town council to receive information related to the 2016 Townwide Reevaluation as required by law under RSA 21-J:11, and to authorize the withdrawal from the Federal Reserve from not to exceed $75,000. And somehow, it seems apropos, I got my tax bill today, so now we're talking about... Timing is everything, right? So go right ahead, Lauren. So go right ahead, Lauren.
So as stated there, and many of you remember from 2011, when we had discussions about the update that we were going to be doing it again, obviously, in five years as required by state law. So much like the last time, we're going to be bringing values to a hundred percent of market value. That's the goal. We, it was a little bit more onerous last time, I think. We had a lot of things going on, we did a conversion of values, we had a lot of different disproportionalities throughout the town that we were trying to rectify. And I'm not really anticipating that type of change this time through and seeing what we've seen for changes in the sales throughout the past five years. We just completed the ratio study for the town, so effective for 2015, we're looking at assessments that are about at ninety-four percent of market value. So what that means, we haven't seen that in quite some time, is we're seeing actually appreciation in the real estate market in Merrimack for the first time in quite a few years. So that's a positive, positive swing to start seeing values come back. So much like we did last time, we're proposing to do the update to comply with state law. We'd go through much of the same processes that we did last time, starting with going out, measuring and listing all the sale properties, creating a new CAMA model and new tables. We would implement those new values, do a full townwide field review, which is us, three of us here, in a car, driving parcel by parcel, reviewing all of the data in town to make sure that our data is as accurate as possible. Which, I'm going to back up for two seconds, because I kind of got ahead of myself. When you first mentioned that we're going to do a revaluation, not really. We're doing an update of values. And I say that because a revaluation is really two components. A revaluation, by definition, would be a full measure and list of all your properties, completed with that full update of values, bringing everything to market value in that last year. Just based on size, almost eleven thousand parcels in Merrimack, to try to do a revaluation in one year would be pretty burdensome for most anybody, to go out and have to measure eleven thousand properties in town and then bring values to market value. So we, with staff in-house, have been measuring and listing properties over the past five years to try to make sure that our data is as accurate as possible. And that is a cyclical process that has been ongoing for many years.
I'm sorry, Lauren.
That's okay.
I just think it's important to point out, when Lauren is talking about the process that she's going through as being not a full measure and list and all that kind of thing, we spent a lot, she educated me a lot today, that it would cost between three-hundred-and-fifty and four-hundred thousand dollars to do that whole process.
If it were all at once.
If it were all at once.
And that's just largely based on the amount of staff that would be needed to do that work and to get it done in a timely manner to get those values finalized and turned back to the town in order to get your tax rate set in 2016. So the process, by doing this, it streamlines it, and it's a little bit more cost-effective for the community to do it in that manner. We go through all the same processes and all the same steps. We just, the measuring and listing part, we do over a couple of years to try to...
And that's within the regulations.
Absolutely. There's no requirement to measure and list the properties. The requirement is to value a new once every five years. However, once every five years, the State of New Hampshire Department of Revenue does come in for an assessment review process, and part of their review is to verify the accuracy of the data. When we came in five years ago and they were looking at that preliminary, there were some issues with the data. So we've worked diligently to make sure that we're continually out visiting properties so that we have an accurate database and that, so that values will be fair and proportionate. So that's a, it's a big part of the process, because obviously, if you have bad data, you're going to result in bad values. So bad, junk in, junk out. So we've maintained that cyclical process to go out and continually visit properties throughout the town and to try to even out costs so that the town doesn't have those big revaluation costs, you know, once every five or once every ten years, which is what the town used to do. So I just wanted to back up a little. Did you have a question, Tom?
No, I said it was more like twenty years before they did full evaluations.
Well, yeah, I kind of looked back over some of the history, and obviously, being here before, I have some of that. You know, so the town was, the assessing department was largely the same, you know, we just had a full-time assessor at that point. But eighty-nine, nineteen eighty-nine, was a big, big revale here, and it was a tough revale. That was, some of you may remember that one. And they did it again in nineteen ninety-five. So they had C L T do it in nineteen eighty-nine, then again in nineteen ninety-five, with Dominic retiring in two thousand. And then Brett came in right there. Brett had to do it again in two thousand, and then he was doing some statistical analyses on an annual basis to try to meet that same, that same need.
So what you're saying, if I'm understanding correctly, you're just doing a little bit each year.
The measuring part.
Maintain the data.
Right.
So when it comes time for the evaluation, you've got all the data there.
Correct.
Rather than waiting till the end.
Right, and that's become, for the most part statewide, that's become pretty much the model, because it is really burdensome for a town to take that on. I mean, I know Manchester has done it, and it's, you know, half a million-dollar endeavor to do it in one year, and it's a tremendous amount of staff.
The results are ugly.
The results are ugly, and it's...
I remember eighty-nine and ninety-five. I don't drink wine from those years, because those were bad years.
Yeah, it was tough.
Ninety-five was awful.
The positive thing is that consistently, Mike has been our field assessor now for a long time, so he's the one doing all of that field work. So he's, it's, it's being done consistently by the same person, the field work, where when you bring in, when you bring in ten, twenty, thirty staff members to do it, as much as you train them all to do it the same...
Integrate reliability, yeah.
Absolutely. So that's where we are. We're at that fifth, fifth year required to update. I just don't expect what we encountered five years ago. I do expect values to change, but they're going to, from what I'm seeing in the sales, it appears to be a more uniform change. But that does mean that what we're seeing with a ratio at ninety-four for 2015, that if we continue to see appreciation for sixteen, we will be seeing values going up, which is a good thing. It's a big asset we own. We want to make sure that it maintains its value, so.
Questions, Dan?
As a comment, as real estate, as I think Bill mentioned either to me or to us, but there's like over two hundred homes for sale in Merrimack right now. This is an ideal year to get that data on what is real. If you, if we see two hundred homes and what they resold for, it's going to be a very interesting number of what's real and apparently fair. Because it's fair, if someone's willing to pay that price or whatever it turns out to be, I just feel like it's a solid number, whatever, whatever way it goes.
Absolutely. And for the ratio study, we had, which is taking six months prior to April first and six months after April first, so that time isn't really skewing those results. And we had just shy of five hundred qualified sales in that year. You know, so in the, when the market was really more depressed, you know, we were down to maybe two, two hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty qualified sales. You know, so to get just shy of five hundred qualified sales is a huge improvement. And I'm seeing them all over town. So it's not like it's one neighborhood or one section of town. It really is a good dispersion town-wide. And that's the other thing that we look at, is that dispersion. Because if it were all South Merrimack that were selling and nothing in North, it could lead to disparity. And we're not seeing that. We really are seeing a tremendous amount of sales activity town-wide all over. And, and fewer and fewer foreclosures and bank sales. So there's less of that left hanging out there to jade the market in any way. And interest rates are still great, so people are buying. It's a good thing. It's signs of recovery, and it's nice to see. So much like last time, we would do that field-by-field, parcel-by-parcel review. And once we complete that whole process, we would then send out preliminary notices of values to all the taxpayers again and provide them the opportunity to call and set up an informal hearing. I think that's a pretty crucial part of the process, to make sure that taxpayers have a right before they get a tax bill on anything to come in and discuss their value. So we do that, and then we would send final notices of value, turn everything back over to the town with a complete use pap report, ready to send tax bills. So I think, I mean, that's kind of it in a nutshell, but...
Questions? Jeredy?
Thanks. Good, even though I wasn't on the Town Council, I sat on a board during that 2011 situation and took a lot of heat for people's values going way up. So I just want to make sure I understand how this works and what you're expecting this year. There were, especially people, I know people that lived on Babu's Lake and I think it was Wasserman, too. So to understand what happened, I mean, just from layman's terms, I just assumed that they hadn't been property, that properly valued for quite a while, and when they were properly valued, their tax bill went up substantially, even though the tax rate didn't go up substantially. So that's, that was my layman terms of taking away from that. So you're, but people don't understand that kind of information sometimes, and I know there was a lot of phone calls and education that was done at that point in time. So I remember that clearly. But you're saying that because we are doing a more regular job every year of getting out there and doing the values, in addition to the fact that we have more homes for sale with successful sales, that you're not expecting that to happen again? I'm not saying that one person might, you know, a few people might get it, but there, it was a substantial number of homeowners that were affected by that last year. So I just want to make sure I, I know what to expect.
Okay. In 2011, you know, we came in and analyzed all of those sales. I can't say that they weren't properly valued before, but the market changes, and it doesn't affect all properties similarly. So while the rest of town, by and large, was seeing decreases in property values, we weren't seeing that in the sales on waterfront. So we saw waterfront property values stay the same or go up slightly. So that doesn't mean they necessarily were valued wrong before, because it was done a number of years prior to that. What I'm saying now, we are maintaining the data, and it was being maintained slightly different, but it was being maintained before, but there were changes in the, in the real estate market, and it affects different groups of property. But because we analyzed the sales, we tracked the neighborhoods, we're seeing, we're not seeing any real big changes to one specific area, one specific property type. So I'm seeing a more uniform change this time. So I wouldn't expect big changes, but that does happen. There's times where that burden shifts, and it's not a result of someone being valued wrong initially, but the market changes. When there's, it's, it's a, it's simply economics and supply and demand, and it affects things differently, depending on that. But I'm not really seeing that in the sales that we have been tracking. It's been a more uniform, we're five years out, and while our indications for this equalization period indicate that we're at about ninety-four percent of market value, the coefficient of dispersion, which is basically taking all your sales and lumping them next to a target, show that it's pretty equally dispersed amongst all classes of property that have sold. Our C O D is about seven right now. Industry standards for a town like Merrimack would be something less than ten. So it means that everyone's pretty tightly compacted around that target. So we're not seeing that type of disparity that we were seeing before. And that can result from many things, but we're not seeing that now. So that's the positive thing. Does that mean every property value will go up the same amount? No.
Right, but, but much more closely. We shouldn't see the large quantity of people...
We shouldn't see those big disparities.
Who are completely taken by surprise this year, hopefully.
That's the goal, that's what I'm seeing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Bell?
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy, appreciate it. Lauren, back in 2011, you know, what is the percentage of homeowners that allowed the inspector to enter in their home and conduct the internal inspection?
Because it's done over a number of years, that's not as easy to answer. It's getting less and less frequent that that's happening. As I said, Mike goes out to do those inspections. He does a cold call first. He's going to knock on the door. If someone's there, he'll explain what he's doing and see if we can get the inspection at that point. Obviously, a lot of people work, so that's always difficult, but he does leave a door tag, and they call. But if I had to guess, I'd say we're probably in the thirty percent range. And I think part of that is just refusal to let an assessor on their property, which is okay. And, and part of it is, is just the convenience time-wise of people's working hours and to allow that inspection.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? None. I will entertain a motion, because we need to approve, don't we?
Seventy-five thousand withdrawal.
Yep.
Move to authorize the withdrawal of seventy-five thousand dollars from the Capital Reserve Fund. Is there a particular name to that fund? Revaluation Capital Reserve Fund, in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Seven?
I just want to thank you all for setting me ahead of the schedule a little bit. I really do appreciate it. It's been a long day.
You're welcome.
Have a nice evening.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Take care. Okay, now we'll return to our agenda. Regular program. Recognitions, resignations, and retirement. Town Committee Member resignation. Town Council to consider the acceptance of the resignation received from Merrimack Conservation Commission Member Christy Magridas Bradshaw.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any discussion? None. None. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstains? Seven, zero, zero. Okay. In your view of the Town Center Committee, gentlemen, come on in. Per Town and Merrimack Charter Section six-six, at least annually, there should be an annual review for the Town Center Committee. This agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act upon. Good evening, Mr. Disco.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Say, "Good evening, ladies and gentlemen." Try again. My name's Nelson Disco. I'm the chairman of the Town Center Committee. With me this evening is our vice-chairman, Peter Flood, and we're here to bring you up to date on what we've done for the past year. I want to work this. I don't have quite the presentation that we saw from the SCUB.
I know.
That's amazing. I wish I could catch that.
Our generation can't do those, Nelson.
Maybe that's it. Somehow or other, we're not projecting, well, I guess we'll get there. First of all, the Town Center Committee operates as, as an ad hoc committee that was created by the Town Council in 2009 to implement the Merrimack Town Center Pedestrian and Trail Master Plan, which was developed under an eye-track program in conjunction with the N R P C. It was a separate committee formed that formed this master plan, and a map of this master plan is, result is here on this easel. And maybe it's a little hard to see, but you have seen it before. It's, it's the 2009 map, and it shows basically the sidewalk and trail situation within the town center. The town center, as we define it, was defined in an earlier master plan of the town. It consists of the area east of the Effie Everett Turnpike, north of Fraser Square, and south of Front Street, along Route Three. So that is the area of interest and concern here, and that's the area of our jurisdiction, if you will. We are tasked to work with town officials to create a safe... We are tasked to work with town officials to create a safe and inviting town center, and the, and it's, and there are nine committee members that were selected to, that were, the committee was set up with nine members, I should say. The Town Center Pedestrian and Trail Master Plan then made some recommendations. This is from the ITRAC plan. The recommendations are summarized on this chart. With regard to sidewalks, we talked about connecting the courthouse with Route Three through Abbey Griffin Park, a sidewalk along Watson Park, which is actually done in, in 2010, that sidewalk along Route Three there. The sidewalk on the west side of DW Highway from the library to the post office, that is more or less on hold pending the work that needs to be done with the bridge, the Babuusik Lake Bridge and the wire road intersection. So although we have a plan for that, we haven't been able to do much with it until, and it doesn't make sense to do much with it until we do that bridge over and that whole section. So we've turned, we've also, the recommendations also included a sidewalk on the east side of the DW Highway from Twin Bridge to Babuusik Lake Road, and also the west side of O'Garret Drive, getting over into the school. This is the, the section along O'Garret Drive. You can see it in red there. That's an all-red section. That's, that's something we'll talk about a little bit later. And the south side of Woodbury Street is another area of concern. This is used by a lot of walkers, school, coming from the school to down to town center, and basically they have to walk in the road now, and it seemed like a safer route to build a sidewalk there. And then also filling in gaps here and there along, in this area. There are a few gaps where some additional sidewalk is needed. The recommendation included three trail sections. One of them was a trail from Watson Park to the west side of DW Highway, and that goes through the Old Sluce Way. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. And then further connecting the South Heagan River Trail all the way up to the FE Everett Turnpike and the footbridge that goes across the South Heagan River at the FE Everett Turnpike. Also for the future is Watson Park to Twin Bridge Park through the land along the Merrimack River. That's privately owned land and probably will not be done until such time as development occurs in that area. So those are the tasks that we've been given, and this is our membership. As I mentioned earlier, I'm the chairman. Peter's our vice chairman. Jackie Flood has been our secretary, and she represents the Watson Park Committee. Davis Powell represents the school district, and Karen Freed, the library trustees. Mary Hendricks is representing the Chamber of Commerce. Bill Wilks, a businessman in town whom most of you know. Finley is our town council, is your town council representative to our committee, so he's also one of our members. We have been assisted for the past three years by Lilia Mellon as an advisor from the U.S. Park Service. Unfortunately, her term is completed this year, this fall. Her three years were up, and she's limited to a three-year assistance program to each community. So while she's been a great help to us, and I'm going to point out some of the things she did for us, we're going to lose her this year, which is unfortunate. And Kyle Fox is advisor from the Merrimack DPW, working with Eileen. Eileen, of course, is our primary point of contact, but Kyle Fox has been a great help, and especially in obtaining a grant that I'm going to talk about in a minute. But Kyle's a good soldier there. Our major projects this year, the committee has focused on three principal things. I don't know where those little icons came from on the Viewgraph. More from my original. But anyway, the South Heagan River Trail has been our first emphasis this year. And this year, we've also begun to focus more on public outreach, to reach the community and let people know what we're doing, what this South Heagan River Trail is about, and how, how nice it'll be for the town, and we're getting a lot of positive support on that. We've also done some further work with the safe routes to school. I'll point that out in a minute. The South Heagan River Trail is the plum of the year. This is a hiking trail that extends from Watson Park to Wildcat Falls along the South Heagan River, on the north side of the South Heagan River, using the Old Mills Sluce Way under Route Three. And it includes a connection all the way to the footbridge over the South Heagan River at the FE Everett Turnpike. There was a footbridge installed there as part of this Merrill's Marauders Bridge upgrade that was done by the DOT last year. They were able, at that time, through some influence in the town manager here, were able to get a footbridge that was no longer being used in Portsmouth and was brought here, and it's been in place, and it's a, it's a really nice bridge if you ever get a chance to go out there and look at it. The Transportation Alternative Program is the sponsor of this. This is a grant in the amount of four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to the Town of Merrimack, and it was awarded with matching town funds of a hundred and nine thousand dollars, which was planned for safety improvements to the Route Three sidewalk at Chamberlain Bridge. If you're probably aware, the Chamberlain Bridge sidewalk partially collapsed a couple of years ago. It became a safety issue. It's been in the Capital Reserve Fund. There's been a Capital Reserve Fund set up, and it's been in the Capital Improvement Program for a number of years, and now it is, it's, time has come, and we were able to use that as matching funds to get this other federal grant to extend the thing all the way to, all the way to Wildcat Falls. So that was very good news and has really encouraged the committee a lot to keep going with this, and, and we're looking forward to implementation of that. This is a federal project which is being administered through New Hampshire DOT, and the Merrimack Department of Public Works will be overseeing it for us. We are currently in the process of negotiating a contract with Quantum Consultants. I believe they're in Bedford for the design and construction of this trail. There is a considerable amount of, some heavy work that has to be done to get the trail to work along the bank there and with minimum disruption to the river and to keep it above the high water marks and things like that. So that detailed design and the public hearings associated with it, there will be public discussions of these things during 2016. So that's what we're looking for next year. And the actual construction is expected to complete in 2017. So it's a fairly long process, and it has a lot of federal regulations associated with it. The TAP, did you?
Close, you know, you're, that
Oh, yeah.
It really does. It's, you know, it's been talked about for so long to think that that date is, is nearby is exciting. Yeah.
It seems far, but it's near, and, and the fact that we have the funds and it's, it's approved. This award was won competitively, by the way. There was, there were thirty million dollars worth of projects presented to the DOT for consideration, and we got one of them, and mainly because we were able to leverage the safety work that was already planned. It had to have matching funds, and we had quite a bit of preliminary planning that was done by the committee, so people knew what they wanted, and, and it was really, really helpful to have that in place. The, the FEET, one of the things of the, that the committee has been working on is a sign at the, at the footbridge that goes over the South Heagan River that will identify and elaborate on Merrill's Marauders Bridge. Merrill's Marauders Bridge is actually the bridge on the FE Everett Turnpike. This sign is going to be there honoring Brigadier General Frank Merrill, who was a, became a brigadier general in the war. He led a group of soldiers in Burma during the war. They worked behind enemy lines, disrupting things for the enemy. Eventually, they were actually captured but later released, and he returned to New Hampshire to become the head of the Department of Public Works, and as such was responsible for the design of that bridge at the FE Everett Turnpike. And so we have received a thousand-dollar grant from the National Park Service to put up this sign. We've talked to lettering design company, Joe Hurley, if you're familiar with him in town. He makes a lot of signs for every event, and he's working with us on that, to make a sign that will be clamped onto the bridge rail outside of the fence where hopefully it'll be safe, and, and we're looking forward to having that in place. He's working on that right now. Also during this past year, we received a favorable letter from DOT for a, regarding a land easement. We had requested through the Conservation Commission an easement or a purchase or a grant of the, of, there's a piece of, of DOT-owned land between the FE Everett Turnpike and Wildcat Falls. There are trails going through it now, so you wouldn't realize it. And the DOT has indicated to us that in the future, they may be interested in donating that land to the town. Meanwhile, they want to hold on to it because they may need some mitigation for the widening, wetland mitigation, for the widening of route of the FE Everett Turnpike when that project occurs. So that's, that was a good thing we received this year, and we were pleased by that, even though we didn't quite get the grant yet, just yet, and they're aware that our trail, our trails are already on it, so there's no fuss there. I want to point out the, we had a map. The other thing that the committee did was make a, have a map made through the good graces of the NRPC. I have some here. This, this map, and we just put that one, no, thank you, Paul. This map, I'll give you, I'll give them a bunch of these. You can hand them down. And it folds into three. Where is our folder yet? I couldn't get them to fold. These aren't laid out quite right, and they, they don't, fold doesn't come in the right place. But anyway, it's a map, a trail map of the South Heagan River Trail. The committee put this together using the maps that were supplied by NRPC. NRPC worked with us on, on making this trail map that you see here, and we've used this in some of our public outreach to inform people of what we have here and what we're going to have when this trail is completed. The other public outreach activities, our purpose is to make people aware of this award and, and what we're trying to do in the town center. The, we, Peter Flood and his wife Jackie have acquired a little booth, a little tent-like arrangement, which they, we have set up at several public events here to educate people using these maps, the map you saw before and this one. We've been to the Winter Carnival, to the Business Expo, and several of the farmers' markets, and it, we attract a very interested group of citizens who come. They're very interested to hear about it. We've been giving out these little maps, and we're going to make this better and in color, by the way. This is, this is a draft, if you will. But we're going to, we're getting good public response from that. And we also, at one of these, received a, one of these public sessions, I think it was at the Expo, we had an offer to donate two stone benches from Dave Brooks, who runs the stone cutting place here in Merrimack where they cut granite tops, and he has two stone benches that he's willing to donate to us for, to put along the trail. They'll have to be probably fairly near this end of the trail because they weigh fifteen hundred pounds a piece. So they're not going very far in the woods with those. But anyway, it's a really nice gift, and we're looking forward to incorporate those, as well as the bronze.
Sounds like a potential Eagle Scout project.
Get them to move.
Large enough troop together, you could
Pioneering Rat Badgers do that stuff all the time.
But, okay, we get rollers and, and lots of scouts. Finally, I'll talk about the safe routes to school work. We had a, this has resulted from a study survey that was done in 2013, and there was a lot of public support for that, to develop a safe routes to school program here. We have a safe routes to school day where people walk, but we're trying to get it more, more often than one day a year. This involves the O'Garret Drive sidewalk and the J Mews School Street sidewalks, the school street sidewalks, and these have been put into the Capital Improvement Program by the school district now for the years 2017, 18, and in 2018, 2019. So those are in place in the, in the Capital Improvement Program for future construction. The, our plans for 2016 is to continue to implement this South Heagan River Trail. That's our big thing. We're going to be holding some public hearings and get design input on the trail as it goes along. We're going to continue our public outreach where we can, where we have public gatherings. Peter and his wife Willing will still come with their, their tent, and we'll have another demonstration. And we're also hoping to pursue any other alternate funding opportunities as they become available. You know, we've got our eye out. Most public funding requires some matching, and that's a difficulty with a lot of the possible grants. But we continue to do that and to seek school safety improvements. And what we'd ask of the council this year is to, again, establish a Capital Reserve Fund for sidewalks, as we had, as was included in the 2013 master plan, and we still would like to see that happen. We going, we ask for your continued support through the Department of Public Works and the town manager. They've been very helpful to us, and we hope that can continue. And we also are down one person. I failed to mention that when I went through the committee membership right now. Deborah Huffman was on our committee, and she just has not been able to attend any meetings because of her new work schedule and so on. So I would like it to be advertised as an opportunity for someone who wants to work with us, and from the public reaction we get, I think there are people out there who would. So I would ask if that could be done by the council. And then there's a couple of links here. If you were interested in all of this, you can read more about it on those web links that are, that are cited there. So that's the, that's the pitch. Peter, have I omitted anything?
Not a thing. The only comment that I might have when we are in public outreach, we reach, many of the people that approach us to know more about the town are people who have just moved in. And so that this work we're doing is more satisfying to know that these people coming into town think more of Merrimack, I think, by knowing what, what's going on.
Questions? And they come to those events, like you mentioned, the Merrimack Expos, and thank you for bringing that table and tent, and it brings people to you, and then they're finding out about projects like this. That's, I mean, if you're not out there and that, that word outreach falls on deaf ears, if you're not going to the events and being seen a few times a year.
We're only doing our job. It's part of our mandate that we reach out to the public.
With volunteers, like Park and Rec Committee, Conservation Committee, Town Center Committee, those are three committees that people, you really, if you go, you're going to have a very good time, and you're going to see something get done. Those are something that you witness through a year or two of you being on those committees, your directions, your ideas, and your work, and you'll see come to fruition. It's just an exciting committee to be on. Anybody I would think would really enjoy putting their hat in there, so, thanks.
Yeah, those committees have been really project-driven, and they're really coming to fruition, as you said. It's not just year after year talking about it. They're actually things as outcomes. Okay, yes, Finley?
It is, it's a spectacular committee, hardworking. I was astounded a while ago when I found out the amount of I was astounded a while ago when I found out the amount of money we got in that grant. I just, I was thrilled. It's a lot, a lot of great things happening, and it's, and it is because, you know, the folks on the committee just are nonstop, and Peter and Jackie are a great asset. The one quick thing, I think Nelson, Kenniston, I don't know, anybody will email him, but I think it's, it says on my page here, D O Y, I think it's DOT.
I think you're right, I believe that's the typo.
I'm sorry. Yeah, and I don't know that he'll get an email regardless, but I just thought I'd make that. Thank you to the committee for the work.
Okay. Thanks to you for supporting us, we really appreciate it, and the support we get from Eileen and Kyle have been really great, and from the NRPC as well.
Thank you for all your work too, Nelson. Appreciate your time. Yes, Jody?
Nelson and Peter, thank you very much for your continued service to Merrimack. I was on the losing end of a vote for sidewalks, and I have a pretty good idea how this committee views sidewalks, but I say at some point in time, you know, putting up a little bit of money, look what we got, we've got to put our money where our mouth is, we task these committees to do these kinds of jobs. And, you know, I'm not proposing that we put sidewalks on every street in town, I'm far from it, but at the same time, there are some spots on this route that were mentioned that are in dire need of walkable ability, and they're dangerous for people to walk on. So at some point in time, and I mean especially, we talked about the east side of Route 3 by Twin Bridge to Bevusak Lake Road, we need a sidewalk there. So at some point in time, we've got to put our money where our mouth is, and support those kinds of projects, because I think there's so much good going on in this area of town, and that if people can't walk safely, and I've heard this thing about people don't walk in the wintertime, or, you know, and even if you had them, the sidewalks available to people, and if we couldn't maintain them in the winter, at least you'd have them three seasons of the year available. So anyway, it's just a plug for sidewalks, because I'm a sidewalk hugger, and I would really like to see some walkable areas on that section of the road, so, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Oh, come on, Dan.
You have like three minutes, yes, mister.
In support of my colleague Jody, I'd like to mention that as budget season rolls around, and we have a section of sidewalk that is vital and important, I would support, we have our paving budget to talk about, of course, by all means, I would not be opposed to your idea about limited particular spots to complement the trail when needed. Absolutely, thank you.
We have that on video and audio. Thank you, Dan.
And you just keep under three minutes, good for you. Okay, next, overview of services, National, Nashua Regional Planning Commission, and it's submitted by NRPC Executive Director Tom Roach, an introduction and overview of NRPC services. And you have with you?
I have with me Jennifer Siz, she's the Assistant Director now at NRPC. That's a very formal introduction for me, really just coming to say hello as Executive Director. I've been, I mean, it's funny, of all the towns I've been to, I feel like I've been here more than just about anywhere in the region. And I think I was here in 2011 when you had that tax assessment issue as well.
Do you remember?
I was like, oh no, not again.
We're never going to let you back in if that happens.
We just want you to feel comfortable, Tim, when you come to visit us.
Glad to be here, really, and I do thank you for giving me a few minutes, and us a few minutes tonight. And really, the purpose was to come back as Director, as opposed to Transportation Planner or Assistant Director, and give you a chance to meet Jen as well, you may not be as familiar with. And also, just to talk a little bit about maybe what I see as NRPC, and what I think it can bring to Merrimack, what it can bring to the region. And there's really sort of three points. I see us as a resource for the communities, a forum to share those information and share ideas, exchange ideas, and a voice for those bigger issues that sort of cross municipal boundaries. I can think of one, you might think of one as well. There's a couple though, there's more than one. So, a few things about us being a resource. You take advantage of some of the things that we offer, you don't necessarily take advantage of all of them, you have a pretty robust staff, and some great town manager. The Household Hazardous Waste Program, which you do participate in, really is a nice thing that we're, I'm glad we can assist and make that happen for the region. We kept tens of thousands of pounds out of hazardous materials, out of landfills, and out of transfer stations, which would be very expensive for Merrimack to take on by themselves. And, you know, we, the residents in the region, in the town, get to participate in six collection days, which if you tried to hold those on your own, we'd save probably about, it's about three times the cost of what it costs you to do that with us. So, I appreciate the fact that you participate in that, and I'm glad we can help save some money there. Hazard mitigation plans, we're able to help update and make sure those are current, which makes you eligible for FEMA dollars and pre-hazard mitigation dollars, which is really helpful. The electricity aggregation program, I know you take care of it yourselves, if by any chance that changes, you're welcome to jump in on our aggregation. The communities that are participating are saving significant dollars, in some cases, up to three times the membership dues of NRPC, so, and that's all done at no cost under the dues, so. Some things that we can do, and I'm always looking for ideas like that, that where we can maybe work together, bring two or three communities together, and sort of a regional purchase. Propane has been kicked around, can we work with two or three communities to do a group purchase of propane, and maybe get everybody a better rate? This is going sort of outside the traditional planning programs that we've always offered, but, you know, I want to bring value to all of you, and to all the 13 communities. And there's a lot of value in planning, it's always sometimes hard to see, but these other services are there, and that, you know, if there's ways we can do that, either through, you know, emergency response purchases, anything like that, if you have ideas that you want to share, we can bring people together and talk about that. You're definitely more familiar with our standard programs, the Transportation Planning Program that we offer. You know, you're serving as the MPO, we make sure that those federal dollars are available. Like listening to Nelson, we played a role in getting that TAP grant for you folks, which was great, we were able to help Kyle with the application, you guys did a great job. Glad it worked out. The turnpike is always out the window, that way I think, if I'm facing the right direction. But, you know, we were able to help out again when the Open Road Toll Project was proposed to move down into the Merrimack area, we didn't really know, but the NRPC sort of came together and said, you know, we don't think this is a good idea, and I...
For now.
For now. And I think that's going to be the way it is for, we'll talk about that in a minute. Some other things we're doing is, we're working with the DOT right now to pilot a road surface management system project, where we are working with DOT and the UNHT squared to do an assessment of road conditions, to help your DPW decide which roads need to be paved first, and develop a cost-effective approach to road paving. We're piloting this with the town of Brookline, we needed to pick a small town to get the pilot project done, but we're hoping that after that pilot is done in the spring, that we can start rolling it out to other communities, and make sure that we can try to...
We do do that here already.
Yeah, you may, and it's just other things that, I'm just, these are things that we can do under our dues and under the DOT grant that we have, so. PIS Services, you're very familiar with as well, you've seen them mapping.
We use them all the time.
All the time. The Live Maps, which is that web-based piece that we have, we've been trying to keep pipeline information as up to date as anybody can keep pipeline information up to date.
Understood.
The route we have up there is close, I know there's been one more change, I think, since we last put an update up there, so we'll see what we can do to get that to be the latest. We're doing tax mapping for a lot of towns. The way we've done that is, if a town comes on, we usually have a fee to get it onboard, but the updates after that are just part of the dues, we don't charge for the regular updates that you might or might not want to do. And the other thing we're working on is a school enrollment projection model, so to help the school district with population projections, and figuring out how many kids need to be, to anticipate coming into grade one or kindergarten, or whatever it may be, Land Use is our other large program, and you may be familiar with the regional plan work that we did over the last few years under Grand Estate Future, I know there was a lot of talk about that, but I'm going to let Jen talk a little bit about what came out of that, because I really think there's a lot of value in the product that was ultimately produced from that effort, so.
Sure, I'm going to bring up two different handouts. The first one here that I'll bring up to you is our executive summary from NRPC's regional plan, as well as just a small handout on some of the collective resources that we developed during the statewide collaborative process that we worked on with the eight other regional planning commissions in New Hampshire. So having just recently completed our comprehensive regional plan, we've got at our fingertips, I think, more raw data, tabulated data, and public input than I think we've ever had at any one point. It was the most comprehensive update that we have done to date of a regional plan, and it's structured in a way that it directly correlates with how municipalities would develop a master plan, so that you can pull the data and the input pieces straight from the regional plan, and have up-to-date information right at your fingertips for your own local planning processes. So, and, you know, and that then translates to a whole variety of different smaller projects that communities might be working on, and just knowing that we have those resources right at hand to provide that cost-effective support to your planning staff and your planning board. And a lot of which, you know, if it's the things that are already there, it's not, it's just part of your dues, you know, it's right there, give us a call, we'll give you some extra information there. Just on the statewide piece, just one piece I want to point out, is you have a little handout on the inside. One of the pieces that we created was an online metrics or planning gateway, and what we did is, because we had all nine regional planning commissions working simultaneously, we divvied up a lot of the data collection and work effort, and we're able to go a bit further with what we pulled together. So all of these common metrics that are the really, you know, the nuts and bolts of the data items that you would pull for any planning project, we tabulated for every municipality in the state of New Hampshire, all of the Excel files are online, quick easy downloads, unprotected, so you've got the data right there at your fingertips. We also, Sarah in our office, who does a lot of our GIS work, or heads our GIS program, I should say, she led the effort to then take that data and transpose it into a GIS platform, so there is now a GIS data viewer for those common planning metrics that you might be looking for. Just a few things that are out there, easy access.
And I hope, having that data, and it all came out of that effort, that statewide effort, but it should, you know, reduce the amount of time that either your staff, or your consultants, or whoever you're using, need to generate information. A lot of it's already done, so I hope the first thing people do is look to this product before they go and spend additional dollars trying to recreate something that we already have. And that's, so if we don't have it, then that's another story, but I hope we've got most everything covered. So the last couple of points is, that I made was, you know, I see us as a forum for conversations about those regional issues that cross the boundaries. Pipeline's a great example. I hope the work that we've been trying to do has been helpful to everybody, to all the communities. The Turnpike's another example for us, in, you know, in addressing that as a group, as 13 communities, because the last point I made was, I want us to be a voice for all of our communities, and I think it was a good example, is the issue with the open road tolling, where, you know, it'd be one thing for Merrimack to go up to DOT and jump up and down and say, no, we don't want this moved into our community.
They don't pay attention to us anyway.
Well, in the end, in our transportation planning process, we had 13 communities come together and say, no, we don't think this is a good idea. So when 13 communities come together, it gets more attention. And that's, you know, those are the things that I want us to focus on as we move forward, and what I want to accomplish as Director is to make sure that we're effective in those areas. So, again, if we can find ways to add value, you know, if you have ideas, I'd love to hear it, because bringing the communities together, we can make those things happen. That's all I have.
Questions, yes, Tom, may I?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the NRPC on the work that they're doing in terms of helping the communities who don't have the robust staffs that you mentioned that we have, for dealing with this situation, and the, having gone to some of those meetings as the council, as the town's representative, one of the town representatives, it's really evident that they are way out of sync with, you know, the, at least, the guys over on this side of the, this side of the Sahigan River, you know, and it's not a criticism or anything like that, it's just the circumstances they're faced with, but the resource that you provide to them, you know, has been something that's helped them at least keep their head above water through this whole thing. So that's something that's really been valuable, I think, for the entire region to have that happen. The other thing is, you really want to get into projecting school population enrollments?
Well, we're into it already, we're working with the city of Nashua, so, in their schools to try and pilot this, so.
Have you talked to the School Boards Association?
We just, just Nashua.
No, just, we've been just directly working with the Nashua School Department.
Okay, because they, they do that...
Yes.
On a regular basis, and I've done three school space needs committees in town, and I have, I compiled, starting compiling those figures back in the 19, when I, in 1977. And then I would start comparing those things to the actuals, to what the projections were, okay? And remarkably, the school boards associations, not remarkably, but the school boards associations ones were the closest to the actuals. NesDex were on Mars. That's how far out of whack they were, okay? But it's really, it's really a crazy thing to try and, and to work out, but it's, you know, it's, but there's a lot of other people have done that kind of work. I don't know if he's still in town, but Raver Donus used to do a lot of that, after he left the superintendency over in, in Wendell. So, good luck on that one. Has the Gasset hearing for this area been held yet?
It was here, yes, it was actually in this room, on October 13th, so. We were here, we presented and spoke with Council Wheeler about a number of projects, so.
Eileen? My very, very sincere thanks for all the work that you have done for us as it relates to the pipeline and the maps that you provide. All I have to do is pick up the phone, and fortunately, apparently you don't have caller ID.
I do.
But anyway, the number of maps, the quality of maps, the precision, the precision of them, so that we know that it's not just a pencil drawing on a piece of paper like Kinder Morgan gives us.
See, I think Kinder Morgan could use their maps, yeah.
They could, they, when they come in my office, they said, boy, we would really love these maps. So, so anyway, I just, I can't tell you how much it means to me, because I'm not, I have never been a map person, so I'm, you know, I'm learning, and having the, doing it so precisely, using the data points that you get, you actually called Kinder Morgan to get, makes a big difference, because it could move a fraction of an inch, and it affects one property or another. And you keep doing it over and over, and, you know, you've even come over and delivered some to me. So, I just can't tell you how much it really has meant to me to be able to help with that. And the other thing that I just wanted to say is that we are in the, we are currently saving to do... I just wanted to say is that we are in the, we are currently saving to do a GIS update, including a flyover, and will probably, not next year, but I think the year after, will be the third installment.
Actually, it's in next year's budget.
Is the third installment?
We were able, we were able to actually get it into next year's budget, with everything.
All right, I haven't seen it. But anyway, so, you know, I'm not really sure how that, how we incorporate our information into your, your system, but does that help things?
Oh, if we can share data and share information, absolutely. In fact, I should mention, we have, the trails that are on that map are GPSed. We sent an intern out all summer long, walking and hiking trails to get them into our system. We can share those with you as well.
Okay.
Not a bad summer job, actually.
Yeah.
What a burden.
It's a little long, though, sometimes.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, that's it from me.
Dan?
As someone who's somewhat, over the years, criticized a little bit, or questioning the fee and the involvement, I just know that to reiterate the work that you've done with Kinder Morgan, but I'm maybe having a better appreciation as it related to my own mind of like donor towns when it comes to the school districts, because we are well-staffed, because we are a lot better than some other smaller communities. It almost makes me feel a better appreciation for supporting, because we look at ourselves as more of a donor town for the rest of the thirteen, and of the thirteen, we're probably three or four of the stronger muscle in the group financially. That number for the dues isn't as hurtful as smaller towns, but I just want to say thanks for that, and kind of maybe looking at the group in a different, more regional
Perspective.
Perspective that I have in the past.
I really appreciate that. It's, it's, it's a hard, you know, as I said, it's hard to get a value on planning sometimes.
Yep, yep.
I know the planning board uses you all the time, right? Jordy?
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. It was nice to meet both of you. Even though this group is familiar with the services that you provide, I think not everyone in town are people who hopefully, and I know people do watch our meetings, that, some of them, but...
They can't sleep.
Yeah, exactly. But I think it's valuable information for people, other people who aren't so familiar, to understand all the different programs that you offer and the services that specifically Maramac utilizes you for, and the other towns too as well that are part of the group, so thank you.
Anyone else? Bill?
No.
Bill and then Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like Dan, I also had been critical in the past about the fees, but for slightly different perspective, I don't think I've ever lost sight of the fact of the transportation piece, which I think I've discovered throughout the years is probably the value the NRPC brings to the, to the town of Maramac. Kind of like with what Council Mahon said about the level of services that our community development team already brings to the table. I certainly will be thinking of how we can best leverage the services of the NRPC as it relates to Maramac. I, I kind of cringe with the school population thing as well, about the city of Nashua, but I certainly would be open-minded to other things that you are doing in Nashua that may be applicable to the town of Maramac, because after Nashua, I think we are the, believe we are the largest community in the commission. So, I think population, economic development, and, you know, access, go, sure, go.
Yeah, no, we, we're talking about it, trying to develop, like we have our transportation and land use and environmental programs, and economic development program, because as long as I've been in regional planning, it's that one thing I think brings value to boards and communities is having that type of service and being able to provide economic development planning services. It'd be ideal. So, we just started that conversation internally.
So, coming full circle, I certainly would be open-minded if you found some type of a benefit that would be worthy of putting on the agenda to come before the town, the town council for our consideration. But I think what we've seen as a council over the last nine to twelve months with your work on some of the smaller towns, I think it's been very clear the value that you've provided to them, so. But I want to thank you for everything that you've done, and look forward to more collaboration in the future.
Great, thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Tom, Kenick?
I just wanted to throw in a quick, kind of an amplification, if you will, of your transportation efforts. You talked about the FBEF turnpike and things of that nature, but you're working regionally so that we can understand how 101A needs to be addressed and things like that, and that's a really sore spot for traffic and things like that. But Maramac is such a small piece of it, it's critical to us, but we're a small piece. If we try to address that by ourselves with the DOT, we'd get nowhere. But if we work within the Regional Planning Commission, we can get multiple towns involved, and we can get a better impact. The same thing with the FBEF turnpike, but just in general, looking at north, south, and east-west corridors and stuff, we appreciate the effort that you have in being able to unite the towns and looking at a regional impact as opposed to border-to-border type impacts. So, thank you very much for the work you're doing.
Thanks.
Yes, Dan?
One more thing occurred to me. You better, anybody who's watching at home and paying any attention to all the things that we do, one thing that's in our, in our backbone through Maramac is Route Three, and someone who leaves work in Nashua around five o'clock and comes back, I know all the backroads now, right, 'cause, wow, Route Three's really bad now, you know, and it's a year, I want to look back, has it been two years that it's been really bad? But now for at least the, so tell me, you're studying it, you're watching it, you're seeing what the future might be. Is there a light at the end of the tunnel? Is that, is that section of our town now between Nashua and Bedford Toll Booth, is it ever going to get better?
You know, it's, you've mentioned the last couple of years where it's gotten worse, and things economically have improved the last couple of years. I think we're coming back onto that, that curve that we thought we'd be on for a long time until those economic downturns hit. What we're doing, I'll tell you what, at least what we're doing is, in terms of monitoring what's going on, we have what we call a congestion management process, and we're required to do this under federal regulations, but we basically do travel time runs and try to determine, you know, you know if it's free-flowing with the signals, you know how long it should take to get from A to B. So, we try out, and we actually have people driving it during the congested periods, and to the extent that we can, we'll use consolidated sort of cellphone data if we can get that and determine what the congestion level is. And that's the first step, that if there's ever going to be an improvement, whether it's signal improvements or capacity improvements.
You're not answering my question, are you?
Is it, I'm going to get to it. Is it going to get better?
Is it going to get better?
If you can get those signal and capacity improvements done, yeah, it could be better. I mean, it could always be better, so.
I just never remember, you know, I've been here twenty years now, to know how really bad it is. Is it our new reality, you know, is it just going to bumper-to-bumper twenty miles an hour for the next, you know?
At certain times, yeah.
Yeah, but to address that, it's, you know, it's signal coordination and turning movements and things like that, but we have to take that first step of documenting the problem, and we've, we're well into that now, especially this last year, so. Then it's a matter of finding the funds to make improvements, which is always a challenge.
Eileen?
Obviously, the widening of the turnpike is going to make the turnpike more attractive to people rather than, hopefully, rather than DWI.
Right, and avoiding those, the two bottlenecks where it drops down, and that's, that may be one of the lights, is that, and...
Probably one of the reasons why you have that traffic on Route Three now is because of the lane drops on the FEB turnpike. You know, it's not just northbound
Yeah.
In the afternoon. It's, today was southbound, that was backed up a long way, for whatever reason.
The widening does seem several years away, though, right? I mean, to be realistic about it.
Yeah, the ten-year plan hearings that were here, the timetable that was presented by DOT, I brought this because I knew we would end up talking about the turnpike eventually. The widening from Bedford, from Maramac to Bedford, the, under the current toll structure is the way they presented it, is 2022, 2024. However, they also presented another slide that talked about, block your ears, a toll, new toll structure, a 28% toll increase. Just so you know, it did not include the exit ramp tolls in Maramac, there's no increase on those according to what they presented. But across the rest of the system, it'd be 28%. That actually moved the widening up to 2019 to 2021, which isn't quite as far away, so that'd be, you know, fifty more cents at the Bedford toll, and, you know, fifty cents more up in Hookset, Hampton, and the other major plazas, so. But it buys, you know, buys a few more years off the, off the schedule, which...
And your crystal ball rating on a scale of one to ten, ten being at reality, do you foresee that happening? Do you actually see the gears moving, and in five years, the bulldozers are out there actually doing it?
With the toll increase? Assuming the toll increase?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, the turnpike is, since they're that, that capital fund, they, it's much more, it's much more clear financial picture for them, so if they can increase the tolls, I could see that schedule being realistic.
And if not?
I think their other schedule will be realistic. They're just, they're just working within the revenue that comes in through those tolls and nothing else, so.
Yeah, well, don't forget that's the governor and council that dictate the
The toll increase.
Now.
Yeah.
And the majority on that council is not amenable to it.
The economic engine of the airport in Bedford, Maramac, Nashua, Manchester, is just that corridor alone, you would think that it would be taken seriously.
Yeah, and those lane drops need to be addressed. I mean, it's just, it's not good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, thank you very much for coming, Tom. Hopefully, you've heard appreciation from this council.
I did, I'm very pleased. Thank you very much for having me.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It's actually a question for Tom for institutional knowledge purposes. Didn't they discuss a long time ago, putting a parkway along the river to kind of draw traffic away off of DW Highway back in the eighties, early nineties?
For where?
Yeah, Front Street.
Yeah.
Okay. And that fell, that fell apart.
Pipe drain.
Okay.
That's in the pipe drain department.
It was a great dream, though, because it would have been a great idea. North down on the river, south down on Route Three.
Ah, oh, I see what you're saying. Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Jack, and I just had a thought. All the other information we have for the agenda is things that we can talk about without having anyone here. I would like to be able to move up so that
Yeah, do that.
Captain Dudash doesn't have to stick around and listen to us. Blouvie.
Who?
Blouvie. You're welcome. I didn't, I didn't specify, did I? Okay, donation acceptance for the Maramac Police Department submitted by Captain Dudash. Town council to consider the acceptance of a donation in the amount of $2,500 from Digital Federal Credit Union to the Maramac Police Department to offset expenses for the PAC program pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Child Article 8-15.
Thank you very much. For the past three years, I think I've been in front of the council. The last two years is for the amount of $2,000 that DCU gave. This year, they, I think, brought up to about $2,500, and in their letter to us, basically helping us provide some type of service, some type of support, and we thought the best place, again, would be for the PAC program, which is kind of our hybrid DARE program that we have, and it would help, you know, offset some expenses such as our materials and awards for the kids.
Excellent. Do we have any comments, questions from the...
Can you just amplify on that? You've, you've received this donation and applied it towards a PAC in the past?
That's correct.
Okay. How many years, or just...
This is the third year that DCU has given a check to the Maramac Police Department. The last two years for the amount of $2,000. Today, it's for $2,500.
Okay, and if, and if you didn't have this money donated to drive the PAC program, what would happen? It wouldn't be, or...
Still doing fundraisers, you know, Rob Keller's in charge of that. He's our community service officer. He works, he's the one that actually oversees the PAC program. He runs things like a basketball charity game between the teachers and the police officers, so. And it's also like, you know, selling some food at these events and stuff like that, so this actually makes it a lot easier, and it, this almost basically covers all the expenses for the whole year.
Awesome. That's great. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that they stipulated a donation to help something specifically in the community. I just wanted to get a better understanding of how that's helping.
Right, yeah, the last two years, I think they identified, you know, maybe some working with kids. This year, they said, kind of made it a little broader, and we'd like to keep it with the PAC program.
Okay, very cool. Thank you.
Eileen?
Mike, I was just curious, is this, is this a corporate donation, or do they raise these funds in some fashion at their...
It comes from, right from their PR division out of, I believe, Mayfair, Massachusetts, and it's from the corporate headquarters.
Okay.
And I believe last year, you know, we ended up going down to DCU, down off, by the Maramac email, took some photos, and put it on our Facebook account, thanking them.
Perfect, cool, very good.
Jerry?
Thank you, thank you, Captain Dudash. I'd like to thank the credit union also. It's a very, very generous donation, and this is a great opportunity to highlight the continued collaboration between the police department and the town and the school district. And we talked about Maramac Safeguard so many times. One of the provisions for the grant for the school resource officer at the middle school is, there's business involved, you know, there's different sectors of community that participate, and this is, the businesses are representative, they're one of the sectors, so I think this is a perfect example to highlight for, for that community involvement with, with our town. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Dan, could I entertain a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that the town council accept the donation in the amount of $2,500 from Digital Federal Credit Union to the Maramac Police Department to offset expenses for the PAC program pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Child Article 8-15. Furthermore, that the town manager and/or her proxy be authorized to sign any old documents necessary to accept the check donation, and furthermore, that we politely ask either the town manager or the police chief to write a letter of thanks to the Digital Federal Credit Union for their continued support and collaboration of programs that impact the families of the town of Maramac, period.
Second?
Second.
Eileen, we're out of the second. End it.
As opposed to you back with us, like?
All those that they've been saying, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any? Okay, seven zero zero.
Thank you.
Captain, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there is no public hearing. Are there any legislators here? Saying none. Tom Andrews' report. Don't distract her, Dan.
I know, it's awful. The 23rd Annual Maramac Halloween Party, co-hosted by the Parks and Recreation Department and the Police Department, was held on Friday, October 23rd, and we are pleased to report that we had an estimated 800 people
Crazy.
In attendance for the event, and would like to thank all the organizations involved to make such as, the event such as a success. Pictures from the event are at the website of Parks and Recreation, www.parks, Maramac Park, Parks and Recreation dot org. The next household hazardous waste collection will be held this Saturday, November 7th, and at the Nashua Public Works Garage at 9 Stadium Drive from 8:00 AM to noon. For a list of acceptable materials, please check out the Maramac Solid Waste Division site on the town website. There is a fee of $10, which covers 10 gallons or 20 pounds of material. The Sunset Shores Project, which includes a sewer extension, water extension, gas line, gas lines and drainage, is nearing completion. Continental paving has paved the final coat of pavement on the roads, and final paving of driveways and pump station pads was scheduled for today.
This weather, I'm sure, is helping them finish that, I'm sure.
Yeah, by now, usually the asphalt plants are closed. But anyway, that's the last hazardous waste collection date this year. Won't be another one until April.
That all, Eileen? Okay, there is no consent agenda. So, let's start with the old business. Legal fees associated with Kinder Morgan follow-up from September 10th, 2015. Town council meeting submitted by Town Councilor Dan Dwyer.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Not a long, obviously, debate or discussion here, just a regular update so the folks at home and all of us can just keep being aware of the legal costs that's been associated with our involvement with Kinder Morgan coming through town. And so, as of today's, uh...
As of September.
As of September, $54,000, $54,700 approximately has been spent, and hopefully, our, you know, it seems to be getting less, the incline is declining, so to speak, so that's where it stands for as of this moment. Thanks.
More information, I'll go, Eileen. Yes, Eileen?
Plus staff time. Plus staff time, very expend, you know, the expense associated with that is.
Yeah.
Um, just understood, or lack of time to do, put efforts elsewhere, um, and, uh, Conservation Commission, I didn't know if you wanted to mention that also.
Oh. Please, if you had it ready, because I wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's in the big, no, we're in.
Oh, and they, just, the consulting cost spent for the Conservation Commission is thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, so it's substantial.
Which comes out of their, which has been coming out of their fund versus the town side or our particular budget, right?
Yep, yep, but point is that it's.
It's all the same, it's all the same.
Correct, all taxpayers' money.
Yeah.
But, just a little clarification, the environmental impact studies that the Conservation Commission just recently commit, had completed, yes, the pipeline coming through was a huge driver and moving them forward and the timeliness. However, we had all of the conservation property in town, not just that that might be impacted by the pipeline.
It was going to be done anyway.
Um, yeah, I just want to, if anybody from Kinder Morgan's watching and is going to call us out on our details, just want to make that clarification that it was all the conservation property in town that was studied, thank you.
Good timing, I remember a conversation about some of it had already been done, and it was going to be able to feed into the information that was needed.
And the, the inform, it had been quite a while since it had been done, so it was something that was, um, it was a good idea and, and necessary to have done anyway. But, but yes, a lot, the driving factor for it was the pipeline, absolutely.
And this is one last thing, I may just suggest that Paul bring it back to us at the end of the year, our last December meeting, we'll, uh, we'll just bring it up again to say what that number is done.
The summary for the, okay? Okay, MYI update, uh, submitted by Finance Director, Assistant Town Manager Paul McKelley. Town council to receive an update from the Finance Director relative to the audit.
Uh, one of our state Mr. Thornton, President of the MYI could not make it tonight for personal reasons. However, he did give me an email and I'd like to read the email.
Yep.
Basically, he said, Paul, below is, uh, a message from our auditors. Um, the auditor states, once we receive the final quick book file from across, this is in the works, we will be able to finish compiling the items needed on, on items needed list. This list will include questions and requests for invoices, deposits, et cetera. Once we receive the requested items, it is typically takes about two weeks for us to pull the work papers and financial statements together and have them go through multiple levels of review. During these two weeks, additional questions may be asked or additional items requested. That being said, it's, it's, and factoring Thanksgiving, as of right now, we're looking at the end of November for a draft financial statements deal. The reason why I bring this forward is because in the contract with the Merrimack Youth Association, the council spelled out that they wanted the financial statements um, from the MYA by October thirty-first. It's November fifth, this doesn't look like we're going to be receiving them until mid-December.
Probably January.
Mm, most likely in January. Um, I have not been requested information yet, and they need that information from the town that I'm compiling right now that I have. I just got the audit contact, I'm going to be sending that to them. So there's still a lot more work to be done on this audit than just getting the information and looking it over. So, in my estimates, it looks like January timeframe.
Okay, now, one of the things that's also in, Eileen, did you want to say something?
Yeah, sorry, so, um, will they be missing a payment? I know they got one in October, um, e- early October, at the beginning of October, what's the next payment?
Next payment is January, according to the contract, we pay them the first of each quarter, so July first, first Friday of July, first Friday of October, first Friday of January, first Friday of April. So we already paid the first Friday of July and the first Friday of October, so they got thirty-six thousand dollars of their money.
Yes, Tom?
Yeah, the other issue here is not just the payment, it's the notice to them of non-compliance.
Correct. That's what I was just going to say.
I would move that we send them the notice.
So there's a motion to send a non-compliance letter to MYA, and I believe this is the third letter they've received, is that correct?
Correct.
So the motion is made by Tom Nehan, second?
Second.
Tom Keenig? Any discussion, questions? Yes, Tim?
I think just to do the right things, we, we made these rules, and I think it just, I think Tom's perfectly.
Yeah.
In line, which we, it's something we just should do, uh, we're not trying to play, not play nice at this point, we're just, uh, we need to do what we promised ourselves, what we would do. I mean, I'm sure it'll come through, it may be late again, but I'm confident it will, it will come.
Any other question or comments? Saying none, are those in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstained? Seven zero zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we've done number, new business, we've done one, two, and three. So let's go down to four. Property tax insert, the town council to consider inserting an insert with future tax bills that provides an explanation of the breakdown on the property taxes. Again, Paul McKelley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, uh, tax collector, town clerk tax collector Diane Trippett came to me and asked me if, uh, we wanted to put an insert into the tax bills. Basically, she brought forward to me a bill that she got, uh, an insert she got from, uh, the town of Keenan, New Hampshire, that they put in, and I will pass that one down. And she came to me when she got that and said, does Merrimack want to do something about, with this? I've known, in the past, we've talked about it several times in, uh, at our retreats and other things about envelopes and breakouts and looking at, uh, potentially putting in the insert. Because of the time constraints, we could not put the insert in, because we're meeting tonight, and the bills went out on Tuesday.
We couldn't do it, it has to be sent in the town council.
Town council has to want to do something, so.
Right.
I, uh, did basically a proposed insert that we'd use, and this is basically nothing more than I, our public announcement when we set the tax rate. And then the bottom is the graph that we use when we talk during budget season about where the money goes between the county, the school, and the town. And then at the bottom, it talks about, um, the town council being in control of municipal portion of the tax rate, which right now is five dollars and forty-nine cents. Um, and then it breaks out, if you have any questions about your assessment, call assessing, if you have questions about tax payments, call the tax collector. If you have questions for, about the school or county portion of the tax return, please contact them directly. And this is just, like I said, a draft of, of something that potentially we can insert next year into the tax rate. We, we do it around the December timeframe with the December bills.
If the count, if the town council so chooses.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, that one of the purposes is to provide assistance to the people who are receiving the tax bill.
Correct.
If they want to find out more information, who to go?
Correct.
Who to inquire?
Correct.
Now, the first one we got is the one that Diane Trippett.
Received and brought to my attention.
Whoa. Okay. Well, this one is much more generic.
Keenan, New Hampshire? Keenan? Keenan? Up north? And they have a, they have a co-op school district too, so.
Yeah, it's Mascoama.
Yeah.
Well, this is a more generic.
And this is, it basically brings our, our press release out and other charts.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Just a bit.
I mean, this top information is already. Yeah, yes and no, I think part of it is, um, it is for people who know where to find it. They will not, I, I guess in my previous life, when I was not so astute or inquisitive, like I'm more now, anyway. I would not know, I would not have been aware and acted upon my confusion that there is a di- a difference, and where would I go? I just wouldn't have thought about it. If it were in my tax bill, I might have been aware of it, from my own perspective. Yes, Paul?
A- and the top portion is our press release, but.
Right.
Eileen and I feel calls from reporters about that, they just want to know about the sixty-three cents. They don't want the breakout, they just want to know what the sixty-three cents is to the average taxpayer of the town of Merrimack. And if, they write the article, it's, town of, tax rate went up sixty-three cents.
Right.
So this kind of breaks it out and actually shows the people what the breakout would be in an insert.
Yes, Tim?
I, for one, love it, I, I think it's just, I love it for its simplicity.
Yeah.
And its educational value to me is just priceless. It, it, you, you get your tax bill and it's just one page with an, you know, with an envelope, and you just see it, and it's, it's just one number, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars, you know, four thousand, one hundred, whatever your amount might be at the bottom. But some things, though, so simple like this, you can really say, okay, it, it's not, it's not a judgmental document in any way, it's just really spelling out, it isn't a dozen items. No, you know, it's, it's your four groups. I, I, I think, if it, if I knew, do you know what a price is to put this in? You know, i- if there's a price that would make me say, wow, that's an awful lot of money to do it, I may be against it. But for the sheer educational value, I think it's, I think it says a lot, you know, a, a, with a little information there.
The postage would not be anything additional.
Right.
Because the postage is postage, and they're using a bursting machine to fold, so it would just be one there, one there, and they just burst them in.
Yep.
And take them away.
So it's a printing.
Printing.
It's just a printing of ten, ten thousand, five hundred, um, copies of this, which we'd go to a print shop for, be about seventy, eighty bucks probably.
Twice, twice a year?
Once a year, because you'd only do it in December.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
When the tax rate is set.
Yeah. Okay, other thoughts, anybody? Finley?
In general, I like the idea, however, um, I look at the, the bottom, the paragraph at the bottom there, um, the way I would rather handle something like that would be, have it spoken to as if it were a document coming from all entities instead of us. And, uh, and, and, and that means, you know, I, I don't know how to best word it, but, you know, um, right here, basically, it's coming from us saying, hey, this is our control, that's it, and I recognize, we get the calls for the whole tax bill, um, you know, most of the time, especially from somebody who just doesn't dig deeply into it, but I'd rather, I don't even know how I want to put it, but I think you know what I'm trying to say.
How, what would you suggest to be able to deal with the concern?
I don't, I don't want to start off, the town council can only control the municipal portion of the tax rate. I, I'd ra, I'd ra, I don't know how to put it, but I'd rather.
I think you're wrong, though, because isn't it our function, just like the police department and fire department, the tax department is kind of like our bailiwick? I like that word, Bill, right?
I've used it before. Right, but it is, we're including the different departments, I suppose, then within the town.
Because I think that's where we, we have the duty to, I think, I think it falls on our shoulders.
So you're looking for more of a generic.
Yes.
Statement saying.
I say.
Uh, if you have any questions about any of the components of this tax bill, please refer to the municipal, school, or county, whatever, call them directly. That's a generic.
Oh, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, and that's it, and I mean, you know.
Yeah, this is a draft.
I get it.
It's a draft.
Because I, I get it, I, I think.
It's a generalized statement.
I think the ha, I, I don't pay a lot of attention to the school board issues, I really don't, um, just because it would bore the hell out of me if I had to do that all the time. But I, uh, but I do know that we, historically, uh, over the past seven or eight years, have, um, always been focused on prudency and, and efficiencies and whatever we can do to try and keep that tax rate as stable and as low as possible. And, uh, and I don't know if the school district, uh, has done that or not, I, I don't pay attention to that, but I'd rather, it, it, the way Nancy put it, I think I'd rather really focus on that and make it so, you know, people can now dig and find out what they want to find out.
In fact, what might, again, keeping it generic in a statement, what I just said, and I mean, we're giving it, if, if we're going to be doing this to be able to assist the people who are getting tax rates to where to go for inquiry, then we should be consistent and say, okay, for the county, here's a phone number you can call.
Sure, sure.
For the municipality, here's our phone number. For the, uh, school, for the state. Give them a, just put a little, right?
Sure, sure.
So that's consistently applied, yes, Paul?
I understand, from what I'm gathering is that you all think it's a great idea?
No.
Well, most, majority.
We're just making it more acceptable.
Majority thinks it's, it's a good idea.
Perhaps, we're not done, Bill still has an eye.
Perhaps, we're not done, however, we could wordsmith this during, during our retreat.
True, but you want the concept to be.
The concept, if, if the council.
You want to know if, if we approve the concept of.
Approve the concept of putting an insert into the tax bill, and then we'll bring it up at the retreat and, and we can work on.
In terms of wordsmithing.
Wordsmithing and, and of that last paragraph, so to speak.
Okay, Judy, I know you want to speak, well, Bill first?
No, let your, let your, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen.
Of course, that's a debatable comment.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, good thing you prefaced that, I'm going to have to break dance glasses on your leg. I'm trying to understand what the problem is that we're trying to solve with this, first of all. I'm getting the impression that the town gets a lot of calls, that they feel they're not equipped to answer when the tax bill goes out, is that an accurate assessment? I mean, a lot of calls, what?
It's not necessarily the calls, okay? It's the attitude at the other end of the call, when you're talking to someone in the, in the tax collector's office or in the town clerk's office, who's, you know, at the, at the, at the bottom end of the, of the totem pole here, who's trying to answer questions or trying to deal with an irate taxpayer who feels that they are being overcharged.
But we deal with irate taxpayers all the time, I mean, you, it's, when the tax bill goes out, people get upset, so I'm just, I'm trying to understand what the problem is that we're trying to solve, first of all, what's generating this? This one from Keen is outrageous and so offensive, from where?
Keenan.
Okay, it's, it's un, it's unbelievably to me, okay.
Keen would never send anything out like this.
Um, so first of all, I'm trying to understand what the problem is and why, why we're considering doing something like this. And I'll be honest with you, this is not an endorsement of the school district budget, I don't want anyone to misunderstand or twist my words. I admit too, I mean, and all disclaimers, I used to be chair of the school board for three years, since I stepped down as chair, their budget process and outcomes have given me a great deal of heartburn over the last few years as well. However, it would appear to me, having sat at both tables now, that this is a finger-pointing exercise. And I think Finley's suggestion, if we are going to do this, and I don't support it, if we're going to do this, I think Finley's suggestion is a fantastic one, because I think the wording at the bottom of this is inflammatory, and if we're looking to create ill will, which I don't believe that is the goal of anybody sitting here at that table, then I think you need to work on the wording and put something far more generic, as Finley, um, stated, that we need to do. And when you talk about not paying attention to budget processes and things, what goes into the creation of a school district budget is, you can't compare it, it's not apples to apples to what we do, they don't have revenue, they have state and federal guidelines, so it's a very different process. And what I tell everybody, having put my money where my mouth is for six years, you've got an issue or a problem, or you're disgruntled with the school district budget, run for school board, you know, that's, that's really the best way you can affect change and, and, and do it. It's a lot of work and it's real easy to complain at the other end of a phone or the other side of the keyboard, but if you're really that upset about it and it really means that much to you, run for school board, because then you'll have a voice. So if we are going to move forward with something like this, I really, really would ask that you consider using the kind of wording that Finley did, because otherwise, it's going to be, it's just pointing fingers like schoolchildren, and, and I don't, yeah.
I could say, you're to, you're totally right, this is, this is an advertising propaganda piece, this is someone trying to send a message of, and that's not any of us want to send something like that, I totally agree, but if you're making your decision based on this versus that, I could see why you'd be, you'd be upset about it.
But I really want to know what our, what our motives are, you know, I mean.
I don't think there's a problem, it's just about education.
If we're unhappy because somebody has to deal with some disgruntled people when the tax bill goes out, you know, I just, okay, but is that really enough of a problem to do something that you're, you could possibly be creating ill will? And that's what I just want to ask you to think about, is, is it really worth it to you? And if it is, move forward with it, know that I'll vote against it, but I just want us to think about those types of things before we move forward with something like this, thank you.
Bill, and then Finley?
I actually was going to offer that at the bottom, it should say, questions about the municipal portion, call the town manager at this number. Questions on the school portion, call this number.
Just a generic.
Question on the cou, on the county portion, call this number. Questions on how to pay your tax bill, call Diane Trippett. That, to me, is much more or less generic, it's.
That, to me, is much more or less generic. It's, you know, the word I had used was caustic. It's less caustic and inflammatory than what the.
Mr. Dwyer, thank you.
What the example that was, that was provided to us. The, the only other thing that I probably would ask is to reflect that the, that the rate includes, you know, twenty-four dollars and seventy-two cents per, per thousand, per thousand of house value. That way.
Perfect. Another example of clarity.
That's why, that way, people, considering we're going through a revaluation process, they can pull out their tax bill or go to town hall and get their tax card and, and do their arithmetic. And not only are they looking at the, the, the tax value, but they're also can make in comparisons as it relates to the upcoming valuation process. But what I would also say why I personally think this is a good idea is not many people go to town meeting. And this is in our town meeting booklet. So anybody that goes to town meeting, anybody that picks up a copy of the town report, they're going to see this information in there. And there's not many people that go to town meeting or come to town hall that, that grab that, that annual report and actually sit through and look at it. So if we provide the service of attaching, I don't want to say attaching, but including it in the letter that goes out with their tax bill, we're providing at minimum a brief explanation as to how we arrived at this particular figure. And I'm not, I'm not going to be ashamed to admit it, if it drives questions to the different, you know, to the S A U or to the town or to the, to the Hillsborough County.
To the county, the county went up significantly.
So, you know, at least now people know exactly where to go. And then, you know, and let's face it, there are some people in the community that are not internet savvy, that wouldn't know how to, you know, use Google or use Bing or, or even begin. At least we're giving them a piece of information, at least in layman's terms, breaks it down, explains it, and provides a phone number so that if they have questions or need, need, you know, questions clarified and amplified, they know exactly to whom they need to go. So conceptually, I do, I do support it.
Finley?
Yeah, I just, as to, as to the reason why I think it's a good idea and why, what, for me, the goal would be, is the way we, the way our budget comes out, one year it might be twenty-five million dollars, the next year will be thirty-two million dollars. Whether it's, you know, a project that we're doing or proposing or whatever. And so when people see that, a lot of people go into panic mode thinking, oh, my gosh, the spending went up, you know, thirty percent. Newspaper did it, ten, ten percent. I think it was a couple of years ago. They put in eleven, yeah, it went up. And, and we're sitting here going, what meeting were you at? And so for me, this piece points, points out, you know, you can sit here and say, well, it didn't go up, you know, eleven, ten, eleven percent. It actually only went up, uh, you know, but, and, and that's why I think this is important for us, because of the way our budget is portrayed. And I think it's a good idea. We started doing that probably about eight years ago, I'd say. Nine years ago. I'm getting old. And so, uh, so, so I, it, that's, that sometimes has posed difficulty, I think, for the council, because that takes time to explain. And, and a lot of people don't even ask the question. They just see the dollar mountain and say, no. And, you know, and it's, so this, for me, is a tool to help us get by that. And that might not help you at all, but that's.
No, it doesn't. Actually, what Bill said about the annual report helps me as well. And if, if that's how it's worded, not the way this is worded.
The bottom is.
Definitely not the way this is worded and what our true intent is. And that helps me as well. But think about the timing, too. If you put this in in December, it's a good explanation. But by the time you get to, um, the annual meeting in March, it could be completely gone out of people's heads, too. So the timing may.
They'll get it again in the report.
Right, if they go. So, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I, I think you've got to be really careful and do a fine job with the wording so that we don't have unintended consequences.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Eileen?
Uh, I just would like to thank Paul for doing a really good job on drafting this document. Thank you.
It was done with a political purpose.
Yep.
Up there. And it's because they have the regional school.
Really?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment, a backup comment, Judy, about your, um, your comment about the public being able to influence budgets and all that. I think one of the things we also, again, in my previous life, when I didn't have time to be involved in government, because it is a luxury. I mean, there's a time that you're raising your family and you're working and you know that, that you don't have the time. That's reality. It doesn't mean you don't have the interest and you don't have the intention and that you don't follow things. So I wouldn't want, um, anybody who is, at least in terms of the town issues, to think that they don't have an influence when they come before that microphone during budget season. And that, or the letters that we receive, that you do have an impact. And even though you don't have time to be able to put in, to be able to put your name in, to be able to have, uh, more, we are responsive to people who contact us. So I just don't want it left, and I know that's not your intention. But I, I did want to encourage, just to clarify my perspective, that your influ, your communication to us about budget, we do take seriously. And I don't, and I'm not, I'm sure the school does the same thing.
Yes, and no, and, and that wasn't my intention, but I, I still mean it. I, you, you hear people complain all the time and I say, run. And yes, people are busy raising families, but I'll tell you, I did awful lot of volunteering and I sat on that school board when my kids were little and went through school. You know, it's, it's a priority. It's what you choose to make as a priority. And I honestly, what I hear the most is people complaining about the school district budget stands to reason. It's the larger portion. It's a much larger, um, organization than the town. And really and truly, if that's your big beef, then run for school board. I'll, I'll, I'll say it again. I'm not saying that you don't, your coming forward doesn't, um, have a say. And here's the other thing, too, is people wait till really, really late in the process.
That's true.
You know, and, and, well, it used to be the school district had their budget season all through because of the timing with the budget committee and everything else. We did it through Christmas. And I would have, you know, people say to me, well, I'm busy with Christmas preparations. And I would think to myself with my little kids, well, I wish I had the luxury of doing nothing but Christmas presentations. But at least now with, um, the way they've set up the timing, they're not, they're no longer, because the budget committee has moved their meetings out, because now they have their own budget committee, um, because the budget committee doesn't listen to the, um, the town and the water district. They, they are able to move their meetings out later in the year. But we used to have to get all of that in during Christmas time. And I know people are busy, but that's when you do it. But if you're not willing to run for a board, then make sure you go and talk to that governing body, town council included, during their budget deliberations. That is the time to have the greatest influence. So I'm off my soapbox. Thank you, Nancy.
So am I. Okay, uh, so we have a consensus that appears that we are in favor of it. But the wording of it will be tweaked and will take. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I put it for the retreat and then I put again as an agenda item in October.
Perfect.
Sixteen.
Because I'm, I'm.
Okay, uh, the majority, not the... Do we need to make a motion? Should we? Or you just have a consensus? All right, to move it forward. There you go. Okay, next, uh, new business, joint town council, speaking with school board meeting. Okay, um, uh, you all know that, um, there has been a request regarding initiating a discussion about the S R O at the school. And I've got like S R O.
School resource officer.
Thank you, school resource officer. That according to the grant, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there's still four more years left, but they're, the part of the language in the grant, you have to be able to demonstrate that you're planning for the, the continuance of the position at the end of the grant. So.
Year seven specifically, um, they require that you show intent for planning purposes for moving forward.
Which is next year, I believe.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So anyway, so that initiated a discussion about having a school board, a town council joint meeting. It is the school board's turn, because we hosted the last one, and they will host this coming one. So that is one of the subjects. Uh, the other subject I want to be able to put on it is the tennis courts and don't roll eyes. We are in the process of getting clarification from the federal, whatever you, the connection. And we're being told that we are going to be receiving word very soon, which will be prior to, and we asked it in writing. So I'm going to put that topic on the agenda for the next meeting. And I'm going, going to be optimistic that we will have something to discuss, okay?
Because if we're at the end of the line on the information, we're now being able to have enough information to make a real policy decision regarding it.
Hopefully by the time the school committee, exactly.
Yep.
So that's my intention, is that I'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting. We will have some feedback from the federal government liaison, and that will help guide us. But in the meantime, put it on the agenda for the school committee, okay? So, uh, we do not have the time or the date set, but I wanted to let you know. We were going to go for the first week in December, but that's the budget week. Paul told me that's really a bad week to have a joint meeting from our perspective. So I will work with Chris Ortega to try to set up a date. Um, yes.
Is the, can we have a discussion about the R S O as a policy to forward to Eileen? And do, do we really need a joint meeting if, if it's really, is this eighty percent of the work of why we're getting together? Can we do, can we, us seven, come to a conclusion of some advice to give to Eileen that she can go right to Marge and, and work it out? I mean, does it have to be a joint meeting?
For my personal, for my.
Is there other agenda items that, that are worthy?
Well, that's what's going to be the next part, because I would ask you for other agenda items. And we included it in the past meeting, so you'd know what might be left over, which I don't believe you're anything. I think you're right in the sense that there are questions that I would want answered prior to a discussion. My opinion is, I think whatever determination we make should be in front of the school committee.
Okay.
You know, that whatever direction we want to take, it should be based upon whatever data we're asking to be elicited. I mean, one of the questions I had was, what do other towns do? You know, give me some feedback so I know what the options are. And that will not make the final determination, but it will help me make a decision. And that's the kind of data I would need to have. Boy, did I sound New England data. Some of the data that I would, if I decide not to, if I want to fight that, well, I have some backup. But I don't even know what the backup is that I need yet. So, but regardless, I personally think it should be on a direct discussion with the school board. But I'm open for any suggestions.
I think it's a position that's really, really important to the community, and I think it's worthy of a joint meeting between the two bodies. It's a, it's a very important position to the community. So I think any deliberation should be done publicly, I agree, and with both bodies face to face. I was wondering for an agenda item, I don't know, I could be, you guys might think there'd be absolutely nothing to discuss, but the pipeline as, um, you know, Tom's giving me a look. I'm just, I'm, I'm. Yeah, yeah, you gave, you, you picked your head up and you looked right at me, Tom. No, it was Tom Kay, sorry.
I wasn't looking and I assumed it was Tom Mayhew.
No, it was Tom Koenig this time. I'm just.
That was a reflection of me and his glasses.
Thank you.
And there may be nothing for us to discuss jointly. I just feel as if they are way, way behind in where they should be regarding information. And I don't know if there's any formal discussion that would benefit the entire town regarding the pipeline and the process. And because I know they've contacted us for some advice about different things. So anyway, I just thought that might be something we could consider as an agenda item. You're forgiven, Tom. It's all right.
I'm just, yeah, I'm not.
Think about it. You don't have to answer me right now. Just think about it.
Okay. I have it written down. Are there any other suggestions? Now, that doesn't mean if you don't give suggestions tonight, you're not allowed to put on the agenda, but I'm certainly hoping.
Looking over the minutes from the last time, we did a lot of discussion about polling places and security in schools for polling places and stuff. And I don't know that anything has come of that. I don't recall any, uh, anything coming out of that. So obviously, we'd want to at least touch on the subject.
I think Paul.
We, we did follow up with Superintendent Chaffrey, myself. We did follow up and did what they call a hot wash of it. And, uh, there were no issues. Yeah, there was, that's a police term now, when you get back together after the, what happened and the briefing.
Debriefing.
Yeah.
It's a hot wash.
So, uh, so, uh, but from what I understand, there were no issues. There were no issues.
That hot wash.
Hot wash.
There were no issues from the, the last one over here when we did that. Uh, we have a presidential primary coming up in, uh, in January, so there might be some
Excitement.
Excitement and tweaking that might need to be, come about. But, uh, the last town election, there were really no problems. Everything worked as planned. And there was a lot of planning that I wanted to play, um, to make that work as smoothly as it did, so.
And there will be, at the presidential, there'll be a lot of.
Lot. But the only good thing is that'll be at the high school.
Right, and school will be closed, so that won't be an issue.
School, school will be closed, right. So.
Okay. You know what I can do is I can ask Chris, because there are, he's doing the same thing with the school board, or he already did, I believe, about asking if there's any agenda items and stuff. So I will put a question of, uh, poll.
And the, Madam Chair.
Yes, Bill.
Do you, if we are going to have that on the agenda item, do you think it's appropriate to invite the town moderator to be a part of that conversation, at least to listen in?
Absolutely. If it's put on the agenda, Lynn Christensen. Yeah, thank you.
And Diane.
And Diane, thank you. Okay, are there any other that you can think of at the moment? I don't think there's any outstanding. Here, Chris Ortega was, basically, we talked about the S R O being the major issue. Yes?
This is brought up, so I'm just going to state my position on the record, where it hasn't changed in the five years that I've been here. It's a very simple statement. Uh, the town is responsible for the police department. And if in the future the federal government stops giving a grant for that officer, it, I would always vote with the, if the chief of police requires an extra officer, and it's his management decision to place that officer where he thinks is best, and if he thinks the school is the best, then I would always be for that. So financially, uh, it's under our responsibility. So that's why, I've always thought of it that way. And we're lucky enough to have an offsetting cost from the federal government, fine. But the day that it stops is the day that I just feel it's, it's, it's our thing to take care of. Just want to lay that out.
And that's. And I don't disagree with you. I guess the point is, we have to be able to make budgetary decisions, because I know when you're talking about years ahead, you need to be able, and that's one of the things that Marge needs to know, too, that if our intentions, if we come to the consensus that, in fact, that's what everyone feels, there's your answer. They can, in fact, assure in the grant and document that the council has agreed that at the end of the grant, it will be sustained. But there has to be a dis.
But are we going to lock in a council from 2020 on a decision we're making now?
You don't, you don't have to make that decision right now. There are, and I know you guys have heard Merrimack Safeguard, um, presentations before, too. There are other things besides, and he's a juvenile officer in addition to a school resource officer. So he's an S R O slash J O. And the J O is, um, definitely a function within the town and not the school. But there are other, um, programs and initiatives that that federal grant pays for, that's required by the federal grant. So there's, there's all different kinds of requirements and things. And I think the school district may, um, be, be responsible and willing some of those initiatives if they are required to continue. That would be something that would be appropriate for them to put in their budget. So there's, there's all different kinds. It's not just his position and his salary. Um, there, there's other programs and functions and things that are being done with this grant money as required by the grant. Um, just so that you guys know that, it's not just the police officer's salary and benefits.
But it's by understanding that what brought up the whole topic, and I understand your point, I mean, how do you, a future town council, you're, you're involving, what are you laughing? point, I mean, how do you, a future town council, you're involving, what are you laughing at? Yes, you are.
Your face is down here.
Keep our faces down, thank you very much.
See?
She deserved it, though.
Anyway, my understanding is, there had to be a discussion, because part of the grant is to be able to ensure the sustainability of the position. And that part of that discussion had to do with who's gonna pay. And that's why I'm bringing it up, because that's the way I understood it.
Right, and there's, but there's something very specific about year seven. It's not the entire amount that we, that the town has to budget for.
Then I need clarification before the meeting.
So it's, it's, well, and it's, it's complicated. There's a lot of moving pieces to it. So again, to have us all sit there, and I mean, the school district is very well versed with what money comes in, what comes out, and what the requirements are. So you could have all those questions answered, but I am not aware, from having listened, having, well, participated, first of all, in Merrimack Safeguard for years, and having watched the school board meeting where they discussed this, they talked specifically about a portion of money going toward their budget for year seven, but it was not the entire salary that they had to put in. Oh, Paul probably knows more than...
They were, they were starting to budget a portion, a percentage, so if it, if they were gonna fund forty-nine percent, they were gonna fund over the next four years, ten percent, ten percent, ten percent, ten percent, in their budget, so that it's not a big hit in, of a seventy, seventy, fifty thousand dollar position. So they're kind of building it up in the budget, so that it's not a big chunk in the, in the eleventh year.
But I have a question about, how can they do that? Because they can't, they can't retain funds.
No, they're not gonna retain the funds. It's, it's accounting, what happens is, is that I request a hundred and ten thousand dollars for SRO apprentice from the school. They pay me. It comes from wherever, this federal government, boom. Next year, when they put in their budget, I request a hundred and ten thousand dollars for SRO apprentice. They pay me the hundred and ten thousand dollars. Eleven thousand dollars comes from their budget. Ninety, ninety-nine thousand comes from the federal government. They use that other money from the federal government to offset other expenses that, that is all part of this Operation Safe Commute. I think it's best, I'm not versed in it, the police chief is very versed in it, there is a person at the school who's very versed in it. If you would like a presentation on what is the planning process from year seven through ten, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to come in either in the next one in November or in December to discuss this, to give you an overview of what's going on.
To understand it more.
To understand it more.
Eileen?
I just, I, I would just like to put this whole thing in perspective in terms of dollars. You know, big chunks, he's talking about forty thousand dollars and sixty thousand dollars in one year or another. We're talking about a hundred million dollar collective budget, and we're talking about a maximum of seventy thousand dollars, and how it will be split between the school and the town, which is really the same thing. It's all the same tax bill, and getting into this fifty-one percent, thirty-two percent, and long presentations, to me, is a total waste of time.
So, that, how does everyone else feel about that? I mean...
Ditto.
We didn't want to hear your opinion. We already knew it. Okay, so I guess my next question is, then, do we even, if that's accurate, and we can, I guess the, we need to officially, how do I put this? Marge had said she wants to be able to say forty-nine percent, we're fifty-one percent. That sounds like a reasonable thing, right?
The school, that was Marge speaking, that was not the school. If you watched that school board meeting, that was not what the school board was saying.
Okay. So they have to make a decision, the school board?
Well, we should make a decision jointly, if we're, if it affects both of us.
Okay, so that would be part of, well, that's, I'm trying to think...
And if you have questions about the grant specifically, whether it's a waste of time or not, if you have a presentation about how it works prior to the joint meeting, that would make the joint meeting go more smoothly and quickly. If you don't have questions about the grant and the process, then I say just have the joint meeting. But I, I think both bodies need to meet and have the discussion.
What's the majority think? I'm comfortable with whatever. I mean, I'm not against what you're saying, Dan, but I would just want due diligence, it's all I...
Them to say, well, we're gonna budget some money for the future years, the grant is still in place for a few more years. When the time comes that the grant is gone, then it's the management of the town with the police chief. And if the police chief, in the cooperation with the school board, school, not the school board, the school superintendent and the town manager, a management decision will be made, that if there's thirty officers, twenty-nine are over here, and he's sending his man over there, and that's, and the world goes on. I feel it is completely under the management of the police department. They put their officers on the streets and in the buildings around town where, where the management of the police department feels they're, they're needed and necessary. So I'm not gonna micromanage that chief, their current chief or the future chief. I have full confidence that our chief, along with the superintendent of schools, is gonna have a resource officer there, who pays for it. If it's not the federal government and a huge part of the grant, then it's gonna fall on our budget. And I'm, I'm okay with that, because that's the way I think this business ought to operate.
And part of mine, that, part of, was my misunderstanding then. I thought that there was a reasonable sense of commitment that the school board would need from us, and that sounds like that's inaccurate. Okay, and, and that, that, that's true, I feel better. I was feeling pressured that there has to be a commitment from this council as to what our plans are in the future, so that the school board can make a decision about what they want to do. That's why I was feeling pressure, yes?
I think the important issue is that the boards get together and talk about the importance of a school resource officer, and keeping the, the position in service regardless of the grant. And as far as the minutia of...
That can wait.
You pay three dollars and I'll pay twelve dollars kind of stuff...
Yeah, that's right.
Is really...
That makes me feel better, that that can, those details can wait. It's my, it's a matter of agreeing to the importance of the position, okay?
Right, but if you're not willing to put any money up, that's kind of a new point.
But really, in, in reality, what difference does it make which group, which, who pays for it? It's still coming out of the tax bill, and if we collectively agree that it's important, who cares what one cent goes here and one cent goes there? So...
Well, that's the consensus that this council has to come to. Does everyone feel the same way? Right? No, 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 I...
I only get one ditto of six, so I don't have any...
I, I understand what you're saying, and it has influenced my thinking, but it may not be for the group.
Well, I've said all along, I mean, this is no surprise, you guys have heard me come before you many, many times, and I believe that the position of a police officer belongs with the police chief, and that it's a, a part of our police department budget. That's what I believe, so, but there have been discussions, in the not-too-distant past, too. I mean, look at the, all the argument that went on over the crossing guard, and whose budget the crossing guard near the high school was gonna go in that one year, when the police chief tried to cut that position out of his budget, and then went and talked to the superintendent and said, well, you can put the salary of the crossing guard in your budget. So I mean, it's not like these conversations have not happened and have not taken place. I agree, I think it's crazy, I think it's minutia, I don't think we should even be discussing it, but that's just me. The rest of you may not agree. So if there's a question about who should be paying for this police officer when the grant runs out, then I think we should have a discussion, and we should have it now. If we're all in agreement that he'll be a police officer, and we trust the police chief to put him in the budget when the time comes...
End of discussion.
Exactly, and that's where I am.
Thank you.
And I thought that all along, but I don't assume that the rest of you agree with me.
So we need to hear from more people. Bill?
I agree with Dan, and I agree with Jody. The SRO is a police officer, when the grant ends, he specifically reports through his chain of command directly up to the chief of police of this particular town. He's the chief of law enforcement, he's responsible for tasking and delegating and directing where his officers need to be at a, at a given, given sector, at a given hour and a given day, and if it's his, if it's his, or, I mean, we're talking twenty-twenty, it could be a different, could be a her, police chief, five years from now, we don't know, but whoever's in charge of running the department, it's gonna be their responsibility to deploy his or her offices as he or she sees fit. And if they want a, a police officer at the Merrimack Middle School, or up at the Merrimack High School, then that's... End of story. I mean, I, we shouldn't be quibbling over, I mean, I'm doing the arithmetic, this, the school board wants to allocate ten percent over four years, while I'm thinking, okay, if you do a sixty-forty split in the first year, and they pay up the forty percent, well, are they gonna do it again next year? So that means you haven't budgeted for that particular year, which means you're gonna have to, you know, pay up forty, pay up an additional forty percent regardless of, I think, I think the whole thinking about it from a financial perspective is wrong. Ultimately, it's, it's, it's the town's responsibility to make that decision as to whether they want to pay for it or not. And if I'm on the council in twenty-twenty, when that comes up, I'm gonna support it, absolutely.
I just know that there are other alternative, other concerns as well. Tom, did you, you were leaning forward.
Yeah.
Like you're, your intention of speaking.
Am I hearing that we are required to retain that position after the grant ends?
No.
No, okay. All we're talking about is what's gonna happen between now and the time the grant ends.
No, but if you don't start making commitments next year, you could lose year seven, eight, and nine of the, seven, eight, nine, and ten, or what, you could lose continuing years of the grant. You won't get all ten years. So there is a financial repercussion.
The way I'm hearing this, the way I'm, the way I'm hearing it couched, I'm thinking, wait a minute, you know, this is cops program all over again, where if you buy them for three, you gotta keep them on for how many more? And, you know, and I'm going ahead, you know, so that, okay, fine. You know, that being said, I've said it before, the money belongs in the police department, plain and simple. It's cleaner, there's accountability, and it may be, it may be a requirement for the guy to be certified...
Yeah.
How he's paid, okay? So, you know, it doesn't make any sense to go through all this stuff. And it's like Dan said, if it's his decision to put the guy over there after, in year eleven, then that's his, that, then he'll come to us and say, this is what I decided to do.
It's just like the chief didn't ask for help for five, six years, and this year I need, I need two guys. And we said, okay, you know, three.
Three, we gave two.
Well, right. So I, it's the same way, you know? There'll be a year when he comes in and goes, you know, I, I need, I need another guy to put over there.
All right.
You wanna say anything? Okay. All right, well, I feel better. I mean, really, I was unaware of the feeling of the council related to this, and that's what the purpose of this was, so it did serve a purpose, is to clarify for everyone their sense of the SRO, and what the intention would be and how... Yes, Eileen?
I think the feeling where all, all that comes from has come, it's not only in Merrimack, it's come through all, throughout the state, that, you know, school boards and, and, and towns are squabbling back and forth about how the, these positions will be filled or paid for, and the reason why is because there were periods of time where everybody's budgets were being crunched. And so the police chief would say, for instance, I've been tasked to reduce a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for my budget, and I, you know, I have to deal with my own issues here and my own critical mission, and that's not one of them. So I'm not gonna let go one of my officers and pay for this one. So that's how that all happened. None of that is going on right now. The economy has improved, we're, you know, relationships are better, and, and I don't hear those discussions really even going on around the state, those types of, you know...
That's pretty much done now, okay.
In that term, critical, critical mission has changed. Police department's critical mission has changed as it comes to schools. It's a different, it's a different topic today.
Bingo, you're absolutely right, especially now.
That phrase, it's old.
Yeah, exactly. All right, well, I feel more resolved then. Good, good.
How do you feel about that, Jim?
I'd say cops should be there. You guys think so, and the police chief thinks so?
Yeah, okay. Then I feel more comfortable in terms of preparation for the meeting then. Good. Okay. Dianne Dwyer, you're talking a lot tonight.
Tonight.
Ed CAC role for upcoming year to test, this is by Dianne Dwyer and Bill Boyd, to task the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Committee with an assignment for the upcoming year.
Real quick, I think we all admit that the Economic Development Committee has done a lot of good things over the years, and in some years, there, there were off years because they weren't really given anything to do. It's important to remember that they're, they are a task-oriented group, and in their charter, unless the council gives them an assignment, they really don't have any authority to do anything. They've worked great with our Economic Development Department and Tim Thompson in, in prior years as well, but as one of the founding members, the first year, and I thank Betty Spence very much for the first year I ran, I believe it was oh-five, when her and Mike Malzone won, she said, when I had lost, fifth place out of eleven, by the way, not that I remember those details, but...
Who's counting?
But who's counting? And then...
It's gotta be the glasses.
And then the special election that have to be made when the council turned into, or the town selectmen turned into the council, I have to face the gentleman over to my right who beat me.
I do know that vocab.
I know you do. So, all that being said, I wanted the, the topic to come up. I have one idea for tonight, it's not the, it's just one idea. My quick idea for them was to give them an assignment. The assignment was, how about a, a new, and this gave me a little inspiration, tonight, the NRPC did a great cover on the region, maybe we give them a task of the top twenty-five businesses in Merrimack, or the top ten, and then you round it off with the rest of the business in town, but Fidelity's growth, the malls' growth, Atrium, which is now called something else in the expansion, is about ten different companies in town that are really have expanded, and they could just produce a white paper, and this, some type of document that, not only that's good for them in giving them an assignment, but valuable to us, so that we could have something in our hands and, and be more familiar with all the businesses in town, you know, addresses, phone numbers, and how many employees, what they do, and it just seems to be something that... A little, a report, again, I'm just looking for giving them something to do. Then, then the other side of the apple is, because if we don't, volunteers in town are very valuable. We need volunteers for all kinds of other committees. I'm not suggesting that we, and maybe I am, I'm suggesting that if we can't come up with some worthy assignments, maybe that the lifespan of the Ed CAC has come, and we consider maybe disbanding it, because these important people who have donated their time there, we'd like them to maybe join the planning board, or join the, the zoning boards in, in the other committees in town that are really, are starved and looking for volunteers. So I want to give them something worthy to do, talk about with you guys, see if you can come up with some other ideas too, along with Tim Thompson and helping them out, have them do something important. Because if, if, if they're not, then maybe we have to look in the mirror and say, where, where do we go for the next several years with this group? Bill?
Bill, did you want to add any?
Just to echo off of what Dan, Dan was, what Dan has offered, it has merit. The Ed CAC's currently working with community development on the Development Guide. That's primarily where their focus has been, and I know that Tim, Tim had indicated to me that Julian Harris is gonna be working with the Ed CAC on that Development Guide moving, moving forward. So they do have one particular focus currently that they're working on, but like I said to Dan, and I had actually emailed Susan Lee, who is the chairwoman of the Ed CAC, and I did not get any follow-up communication from her, but I explained to her the genesis of Dan's idea, and I explained to her that I thought it had, it had merit to put in the pipeline. I haven't had that follow-up conversation with her, I'm sorry? Q. This would be an additional project that we could add to the Ed CAC Q for, for, for future things to be working on. So I haven't really had the, the follow-up conversation with her to see her impression, her impression of, of that particular idea. I, sir, like I said, I think the idea has a lot of merit, but I would be derelict to some extent if I did not have the, the chair of the committee on board agreeing that it's, it's certainly something that she and the, and the team on the Ed CAC would be willing to, to take up once they've finished the Development Guide, a project that they're working on, so...
Do we know the status of the Development Guide?
That I don't know.
I know Susan was here, and I think there was... I know Susan was here, and I think there was a time, because of various things, that they hadn't met for two or three months.
I got the impression that they weren't close to completion.
No, they weren't.
No.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's, that's the topic I wanted to bring up tonight.
Well, and, and it's a good point, because I was thinking the same thing that Dan brought up while they were giving their presentation. But I, I don't want to just create projects just to give them busy work and give them things to do too. And Dan brings up a good point about if the committee were to be disbanded, then you might possibly have volunteers for other committees that, that really need them. So I personally would suggest that there's more conversation to be had before any kind of a decision is made. And if there were any projects in the pipeline, I would think Tim Thompson would have a, a really good idea of what kinds of projects he might be able to use this committee for. And if there isn't a lot on the radar and then things that we think would be a valuable use of their time, then maybe we have the discussion with them about what they think about disbanding and dispersing to the other committees. But I don't think we're at that point tonight where we should make a decision.
And that's a great, just the topic of having us say to Tim Thompson, you know, we want you to take a bigger role in giving them, giving them something to, you know what I mean? It could be that. Instead of coming from us, it could be us as a unit are saying to Tim Thompson, you have some more leeway to work and give them, and get them some, an assignment that may come from him instead of us.
I think first, perhaps, let's find out from Sue where they are on this Development Guide.
Susan wanted to be here tonight, but she had, she had a prior, she had a prior commitment, so she was unable to attend.
But we could have a discussion with, what is her projected timeline about it?
I mean, and again, like we came back and, like we discussed in June, how when they had their, had their election of offices, that we went from meeting monthly to meeting quarterly.
Correct.
Okay, so that, that's still, you know, the, dropping down to a quarterly committee, I, I think limits the ability to, to quote-unquote, generate paper on a, on a monthly basis. I think the, the fact that the Development Guide has been tasked to the Ed CAC kind of fits the, the quarterly schedule of, of the Ed CAC because it allows the members the opportunity to, to work offline on their own time with, with their particular task on the Development Guide so that when they come and they actually meet and have their formal meeting, the, the committee work is, is actually valuable, 90 minutes to two hours' worth of, of substantive work on, on the tasks that they've been, that they've been given, so... It's, it's a different time from when, from when Dan and I served, where we were doing a lot of stuff the first, first three to, three to four years. And, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the Ed CAC's fault that there's been a dwindling of, of, of projects that are worthy, worthy for them to do. I mean, I've, I've said plenty of times that I look at the Ed CAC as a think tank, and I think, you know, from, from, from a council perspective, we should be treating them very much so like, like a think tank and allowing them to, you know, utilize their time appropriately so that when they present to us, it's, it's complete, it's thoughtful, it's, it's, it's worthy for our consideration and deliberation.
So how do we want to leave it?
I would like to, well, I, I did have some, I did have a thought. I actually would, would prefer, I don't want to make a motion to table, but I think I'd like to talk with Susan first. I'd like to, we meet in, we meet in January. I'd like to have the conversation with the committee. I'd like to talk to Susan. About this.
Perfect.
And then circle back in January and revisit the issue, and hopefully Susan, David, and Doug, since they're the leadership team, can be, can be present to sit in and participate with us on, on it.
Sound reasonable. Eileen, you want to say something?
I was just going to say another method to do that is to have Tim go to one of the Ed CAC meetings, sit down and talk to them and see what they're doing, where they're at, and, you know, if they have any ideas or, or whether he has any ideas back and forth and everything, and he can just give reports to council rather than...
Tim to be, report back to us, in other words?
I think that's, is that, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Perfect. And, you know, you can evaluate where, what is the status of the Development Guide and timeline, and, right, perfect. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, minutes.
Madam Chair, I move the Thursday, excuse me, Madam Chair, I move the special town county meeting minutes of Thursday, October 8, 2015, the following corrections.
I wondered if the same on mine. Go ahead, go for it.
Page one, lines 19 and 20.
Yeah.
Says the video of this, of the presentation can be viewed here. Is that for a hyperlink that'll be posted? When this gets posted to the website, they can click and it'll direct them to, okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, perfect.
On page two, line 10, it should be "they have," not "the have." On line 14, Mr. Duff stated the project proposes a meter station, or should it be metering station?
I believe it's, Eileen, I believe it's meter station, right? Not metering, meter.
Thank you. Page 15, can we add the word river after Merrimack to clarify? I'm sorry, line 15, same page, I apologize. Add the word Merrimack, excuse me, add the word river after Merrimack to provide clarity, crossing of the Merrimack.
Merrimack River.
Kind of makes it sound like we're stuck in congested traffic on DW Highway. Okay, that didn't work. I'll move on.
It's not too, oh, it's 10 o'clock, my God.
It's almost too late. I did have one other, excuse me, on page 12, line 12, the sentence reads, "Mr. Duff stated they would be meeting the following day with the society." Should that be the district? Because it was under the context of answering questions from Chris Ortega?
With the society?
Was that the society of protection of New Hampshire Forest?
Good memory.
And, and I thought that, but, but it doesn't read that from pages 10 and 11, there's nothing... Oh, wait a second, there, I apologize, back on the top, page 10, I believe they started talking about the society.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Page 15, line 11, it reads that, that is when someone doesn't do their 811 call. Is that DICK SAFE?
No.
Yes.
Yes? Oh, okay.
So is it possible to put DICK SAFE in there, because people might think it's 911? Just to add the... Excuse me, Dan? People like you? People like you?
Reading.
People like you who need a cure for insomnia?
Hold on before we leave, page 15, line 18, that should be Ansdale, A-N.
Ansdale, that's right. A-N-S-D-E-L.
Not the beer.
Not the beer, not that the doctor wouldn't mind, but...
That's all I had.
Yeah, so it'd be, line 24 as well, that's correct. Correction of Ansdale. A-N-S-D-E-L.
Page nine, there's just one, line seven, that individual homeowner.
Oh.
Doesn't have...
Take out the S.
Take out the S.
Or the, or the individual homeowner doesn't have. Thank you.
Page seven, I'm sorry, line seven.
Page nine, line seven.
I have a couple of corrections, believe it or not. You're getting punchy. Page one, line 28, as well as the chairman, not as well as the chairman. See it? And, one more. Page one, line 22.
Oh, can you go back to the other one?
Page one, line 15.
As well, the...
No, as well.
As well. That was correct.
Oh, okay. Forget that correction.
Or as well as.
But this next one is accurate. Page one, we can, we're going to have a grammatical debate. Line 33, and remark neither the council nor...
Right.
Kind of Morgan. Neither, nor. That's it.
Does it work both ways?
Or, it's neither nor grammatically. Either, neither.
Either, either. Let's call the whole thing off.
All right. All those in favor with their corrections?
Sorry.
Motion. Oop, sorry, Tom.
You didn't, I didn't think you asked for anybody else's input yet. Sorry.
You're very quiet tonight.
On, thank you. I'm trying real hard. Page six, line 36, or that paragraph, I'm trying to understand why there's a statement in there that said, "Councillor Koenig stated that to be the wellhead protection area," when right before that, there's talk about anything east of the mall flowing to the river. And that's not the wellhead protection area, so... That sentence is out of context completely, or...
So do you want that, that section taken out, omit, "Councillor Koenig stated that to be the wellhead protection area"? Okay.
Yeah, seems a little strange to me. Thank you. That's all.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion was made by Bill Boyd. Did we have a second?
No.
He has a second. Dan Dwyer, with corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. 7-0-0. Okay, we now have minutes of... Where is this?
Madam Chair, I move the town council meeting minutes Thursday, October 22, 2015, as presented.
Okay, motion by Bill Boyd. Second by Dan Dwyer. Corrections. No corrections. Oh, you do, okay.
On page 23, line, hmm, line 20, so Councillor Valencourt remarked that she brought the issue forward. I, I did say that I didn't have personal knowledge of their staffing, but that's not why I brought the issue forward. I brought the issue forward because it had been specifically discussed during our retreat.
Okay, so you want to revise the...
Councillor Valencourt remarked she brought the issue forward because it was specifically discussed at the town council retreat. You can say period. She does not yet have personal knowledge of their staffing.
You get that, Paul?
And that's it for me, thank you.
You got the tape anyway. Go ahead, help us all.
Line 16.
Same page?
Same, 23. Second sentence, Town Manager Kevin Alvermark, that she did not intend to indicate a...
Good catch. Any others? Saying none. Okay, we have a motion to accept with corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. I'm abstaining. This was 6-0-1 with Harrington abstaining.
Motion to adjourn.
Sure, the wind was in the hurry now.
I just had one comment before we adjourned.
We have to do comments first, and you're not allowed any.
You've used up all your...
I just wanted to let you guys know that the Conservation Commission did not meet this week on the 9th. So we are meeting only one time in November, on the 16th. It's going to be a busy meeting, and pertaining the pipeline, the Conservation Commission does intend on discussing filing for intervenor status at that meeting. I imagine they're going to follow suit, but don't know that for a fact. We haven't formally discussed it. Thanks. Just didn't want you guys to think that I was slacking on my report about the Conservation Commission.
Oh, my God. First of all, I didn't ask comments from the press, none. Comments from the public? No.
He has no comments, he just, also, there has no like.
Now we have a motion to adjourn from Dan Dwyer. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
Thank you. Very quickly, Brandon Snell's blood drive is on Veterans Day, November 11, from 2 to 8 at the St. James United Methodist Church. I would encourage everybody in the community to support Brandon and his annual cause to raise blood levels in the, in the community. And the second thing I'd point out, on Thanksgiving morning at 8:00 a.m. at Merrimack High School, the Merrimack Alliance will have their annual turkey trot. For more information, merrimack5k.com. Thank you.
Anyone else? Am I missing? No, okay.
It could be the Rotary, I apologize.
Go ahead, Finley. You're, you're good.
I just, I, I just was feeling for the poor boy scout. I think he probably was dealing with that piece. He had to be here. I wanted to get his name, but I...
Communications badge.
Is that what it was?
Communications badge.
Yeah.
He stayed for a long time.
Oh, my goodness.
And actually listened.
Badges aren't supposed to be easy.
Okay, oh, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? How they did? No. 7-0-0.
Start saving money now. Okay, any other comments? Item number 13, new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? See, none. Committee reports. Mr. Schneider.
Uh, let's see, on December 22nd, yes, the week of Christmas, Planning and Building Committee met. They are still working towards providing report information on their, the, the charge that we gave them. They worked all through the meeting and then lost all the edits at the end, so we just got the update, we just got the updated version today that we have to review. We went through several of the leasing, the properties available for lease and for sale in the area to kind of raise exposure to planning and building with the different options were there. And they're prepared to, they're, they're actually meeting, it's kind of weird. They're actually meeting on Monday night over the top of our meeting, so, to sort of finalize their report and, and wrap anything up. So I won't be able to attend that. I'll be here, obviously, but I'll provide my input before. And then they're prepared to come here on the Tuesday, the 20th, to sort of share their results, so...
Great. Any other committee reports? Vice Chair Barnes.
On the 23rd, I believe it was, PERC, the Program Evaluation Review Committee, where we went over three proposed courses, one that's in art with science integration, with the glass teacher and the chemistry teacher. A technology that's with a lot of, what is it, graphic design and 3D animation, which is kind of the second step to their initial program, so it'll be more of a, an in-depth program. And then third is a technology in yoga that was also reviewed, which has a PE element to it, but is truly not a PE-grade class. So that also was presented and opened for consideration. opened for consideration.
All I can picture is "we fit," or something like that. No more committee reports. We went from the twenty-second to the twenty-third, none on Christmas Day? No, okay. Public comments on agenda items. Is there anyone from the public looking to address the board on? Okay, seeing none. We will close public comments, we will take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Made first by Vice Chair Barnes, seconded by Ms. Gualyumi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. None opposed, the motion carries four, zero, zero. Thank you, everyone, good night.